Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting of Tuesday, November 26. For the record, it is 4:09. If you'll call a row, please.
Commissioner Carrion?
Present.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Present.
President.
Present.
President.
President.
Oscar, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please, sir?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we have approved of the agenda. Amendments withdrawn items. Misses?
Some move.
As presented.
As presented, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Any further discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrion?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes. So we'll go on to item five, San Cristobal Fire Department, for discussion, consideration, decision. Commissioner Sanchez, I'll turn to you for this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, members of the audience, members of San Cristobal, I had, at our last meeting, I had gotten some San Cristobal community members that wanted this to be tabled. They wanted to come up and speak on behalf of the fire department up in San Cristobal. I don't know if those folks are here, and if they are, could they come up and we'll let them touch on what they wanted to say. It doesn't look like we have anybody from San Cristo... Hold on, there's a lady back there in the back.
Please.
My name is Felicia Leonette Roheal. I no longer live in San Cristobal. I did up until two years ago. I lived there since 1984, like I said, up until two years ago. I had to leave due to water issues with my well. That's a whole different issue. When my mother passes away, half of that house that she lives in now belongs to me. When my father passes away, his land becomes mine. So as far as San Cristobal goes, that's my land. San Cristobal is my home, and it will always be my home. So even though I don't live there now, my heart does. My questions with the San Cristobal Fire Department, I have many. One of my questions are, what are their real vestments? Why do they want a fire department so badly? Hondo Seco has been a darn good fire department. I had a house burned down to the ground. Hondo Seco was first on scene. Taos Fire Department was there. Questa Fire Department was there. La Lama Fire Department was there. Before that, we had an electrical fire. Three o'clock in the morning. Hondo Seco was there. They stayed, and they helped contain what needed to be contained. A loved one with mine had second-degree burns, and helped my loved one. And the firemen... Sorry. Helped my loved one. You don't get that kind of service with just anyone. Hondo Seco was there. Now my questions are, who's going to run this fire department? Are there enough members? You need at least 12. San Cristobal's not that big. I know I lived there. Are they going to have enough members? I have very, very, very many friends that are firefighters. They're big, strong guys. After a fire, they're exhausted. The people in San Cristobal, I don't know. My ex-husband and then I live there, he's a dispatcher. He's been dispatching for 17 years. He's trained in first aid, CPR, adult, infant, EMD. He's worked 15 years here, two in Espanola, and now he's gone. He's not going to go back. I myself, CNA, first aid, CPR, adult and infant, EMT-trained, nursing student, scrub tech. Gone because of water issues. That should have never happened. During the Aseca meeting in San Cristobal, it was voted down 24 to 3 not to have a fire department. The majority there voted. There's a reason why they don't want a fire department. If it's first responders that they want, train for first responders, don't have a fire department if the majority of people don't want a fire department. Now, I don't know if it's true or not. You might need to ask them. I heard that there was a closed meeting. I don't know if it's true. I don't know if it's hearsay. But if the meeting was, they didn't post it, and they self-elected themselves a board. That's not right. That's not what should happen. They need to have these meetings posted. That's not the kind of fire department I would want for my community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Ellen, would you want to answer that question about 12 members, or 12... I don't... You know, I'm sure you would be the person to... And what is your take on more fire departments around Taos County?
Chairman Commissioners, it is true where you have to have a minimum roster, and that is 12 to actually start a department. Volunteer departments have a history of their membership fluctuating both to the high side and to the low side. So every department kind of goes through that. As far as the benefits of having a department in San Cristobal or actually in a lot of other areas that we're kind of looking at starting some departments up is the cutting down in response time. I'm not disputing that Hondo Seco isn't a good department and arrived and acted in the most professional way to take care of the situation with the help of the other departments that the lady mentioned. What the benefit is, though, is cutting down that response time. Instead of looking at maybe a 10-minute response time due to the travel time and being able to get personnel to the department, get apparatus, and respond, now you're maybe looking at cutting that down in half. And 10 minutes is probably on the conservative side, knowing that it's not like a paid department where you have crew members in-house.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Also, Mr. Roheal, I want to thank you for coming up here today, because I did get some calls on people. That's why I wanted to table this last meeting, to let these folks come in and express their concerns, you know. And, you know, like I said, it's something that we... I know, we got the Questa Fire Department, we got the Cerro, Latir, and Amalia, Costilla, in my district. And it's a plus for us. But there's policies we need to follow, and I just want to make sure that we're on the right track to support our members of the community and that everybody is on board. And, you know, I did talk to some of the community members in San Cristobal, where they did bring up the issue on the 24-3 vote. So that's why I want to hear... And it's no different than us Commissioners getting... When we have a meeting up here, we hear the pros and cons. And I like to hear that. Everybody needs to express that, and that's why I wanted to table it. And I'm glad Mr. Roheal came up, because it's important for me as a decision-maker that I vote the right way and for my constituents, you know. I believe you folks are trying to do something right, but then I also got to listen. If... Judge, you know how it is when you're out there. You got to weigh it out, make sure it's balanced right. And that's what I'm trying to do to my constituents. And let me ask you this one question. I'll direct this to Eric. I know you said that you had property up there for the fire department?
We have actually several options.
Sir? If you would take the mic and just state your name, Eric, for the record, please.
My name is Eric von Dorp, and I'm fire chief for the San Cristobal Volunteer Fire Department. And we appreciate your endorsement from last week. We do have property. We have several who have offered to donate private land, and we have an option with the Forest Service. And we're exploring all these options. But what we need to do is to move forward. And this kind of... This meeting today was a surprise, because most of us hadn't heard about it until Thursday. And we anticipated formulating a plan of action towards the end of the week relative to what we plan on doing with our resource and resources, and how we're going to obtain or investigate, first of all, the pieces of land, the parcels of land that are available, and in a cost-effective manner, consider designing and eventually constructing a firehouse. And to that end, we have been communicating with Alfred Cordova, who is a licensed contractor, and he has two licenses, one for residential and the other one for industrial, and to use his skills to construct an adequate and viable firehouse for the community of San Cristobal. We're looking for a location that is centrally located, that the residents in the valley can benefit by the proximity of the firehouse. That's, we realize, to be an important feature. People can say, well, I'm 300 yards from the firehouse. That's a boon for insurance costs being low. If you are six miles or seven miles away from a firehouse, the insurance premiums are reflected accordingly. So to answer your question, we do have several parcels identified, and what we want to do is to formulate a cohesive plan to implement setting up our unit so that by early spring, we're ready to go. And this includes obtaining the land, accessing the funds that the state legislature has appropriated in our behalf, to seek additional fundraising. We, you know, we have to beat the bush to find... and shake the bushes to find donations, but we feel that these are available. We have already been doing that. And then, of course, as I mentioned, to design and construct a firehouse on the land that has been identified, using the resources that we have. We feel like we can build a firehouse for roughly $40,000. It may be without a concrete floor. We can sit it on gravel, but on footers, but, you know, have a gravel deck there until we have enough money to put in a slab. What we want is a firehouse that can handle two vehicles, a brush truck and a tender, a tender having the capacity of anywhere upwards of 700 gallons, and so that we can respond and cut the time of response down to, as you say, suggest, or the fire chief suggested, in half. It's not to question that Hondo Seco or La Lama have done their utmost. We appreciate very much the protection from Hondo Seco and La Lama. But if we can cut their response time down in half, so much better that we can respond to an incendiary within our valley. And as was discussed last week, the county is looking at placing fire stations within three miles of each other. This is an effective way to save lives and property. And we feel that, you know, we're sandwiched kind of midway between La Lama and Arroyo Ondo, and it's roughly three miles each way. And if we can have a fire response unit there, it's so much better for the people of San Cristobal. There was mention made of a vote that was taken at an Aseca meeting. And true, and I will not dispute it, that, you know, it was 24 to 3 or something like that. And the 24 were in disfavor of siding with La Lama, and the 3 were in favor of siding with La Lama. We listened to that as a board of directors. Now, the board of directors, I have to go back here, were selected or nominated by a committee of residents. It was open. All the meetings that we have are open. I mean, there's no surreptitious assemblage that, you know, we're a select few and we want to hold on to our power. This is not it. We're responsive to the community. The community has asked us to set up a fire department, and we have tenaciously, over the last year and a half, been working in that direction. So our meetings are open. The initial board of directors that administrates the fiscal and administrative responsibility of the fire department was voted upon by the members at that time: Felipe Cordova, Dennis Alonia, Alfred Cordova, myself, and one other entity. And we set up the board of directors, and then we set up the fire department, from a core group of around eight people. And we've had attrition. We've had new members come in. And of course, you know, we need a complement of eight or 12 people to man a fire department independently of other fire departments. We have a population base in San Cristobal of 220 people, and out of 220 people, we feel that we can adequately muster a minimum of 12 fire volunteers. Presently, we have, you know, an active group of about eight or nine. This isn't to say that we cannot increase it. If we, you know, we no longer want to cut bait, but we want to start fishing. And to do so, you know, we need to take the money that is allocated for us and to start working on building a unit, a fire station, as well as to begin, thirdly, to start procuring equipment, the trucks, the machinery, the equipment that is needed to abate fires, water hoses and whatnot. And at the same time, to continue recruiting, at the same time, to find that we can involve more community members, so that it's not a standalone unit. I can see that the volunteer fire department will become an integral part of the community of San Cristobal. It brings the community together. To address issues like water, for example, we have a plethora of growth up in San Cristobal Canyon, a lot of saplings that don't survive but compete for the same amount of water that comes down through San Cristobal Creek. And there is an initiative on part of the Forest Service to thin the forest areas. And thereby, we will unleash more water into San Cristobal Creek than we presently have, because at this point, you can hardly walk up the canyon without being encumbered by debris and a plethora of saplings that are competing for the same amount of water. And so the idea of thinning the forest eventually will, I would hope, and this is what the Forest Service says, provide us with more water than we presently have. And the young ladies comment about wanting water. This is a big issue in our valley. We have no reservoir. We only have the San Cristobal Creek. And we have three Asecas that feed off of the creek, and this is the exclusive source of water for the whole community. We have a domestic water system, and about 40 families benefit from that. I could go on, but I don't want to bore you. So if you have any other question, please.
Commissioner?
Yes. Eric, you were at our last meeting last Tuesday, correct?
That's right.
Okay. I think Vice Chairman Romero made a motion to add this on this meeting for today for the San Cristobal. Correct, Vice Chairman?
I don't remember the specifics, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Sanchez, I don't know if we have record of it at this point already.
Okay. And I just wanted to let, you know, the audience know that we had... That's why I wanted to table it, to get people to come in today, speak either for or against. And then also, to get these monies, we're talking legislative appropriations, we are going to need a deed for the county. Do you... Can you get us that?
We will, you know, like, we'll have to step it in. You'll have to give us direction as to how to go about the process. This is new for us, but I understand that the county needs a deed for the piece of land that we're identifying, and we will obtain that.
And another question here, Eric. Your board of directors, how often do you have your elections?
Once a year.
Once a year. And you've been there, this board of directors, been there for a year? They've been there for a year?
Yes.
Let me ask you this, Eric. What happens, maybe Allen could answer this, what happens if you don't get the 12 people? Hopefully, you'll get them, but what happens if that doesn't happen?
Chairman Commissioners, just to get started with the state, they have to have the 12 people on a roster. So there is kind of that, I guess, they need to have that intensity to try and muster up three more people to put on the roster before they would be even recognized for a probationary period through the state.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. That's it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, admittedly, recruiting is a big issue. And we're doing our utmost to recruit. We presently, as I mentioned, have eight to nine that are actively involved. I have a list of 22, but I know some of them are not involved. So, but I think that we can muster 12. You know, if we can't, then so be it, and you have to decide. But I see no problem.
Eric, when is your next meeting up there?
Our next meeting? Well, we... Administrative meeting with the board, or is it training?
A board.
The board meeting. We were going to have one tonight, but I think we're all exhausted and getting ready for Thanksgiving, so we're talking about postponing it to this weekend.
Okay. And who, this is the board members and the community's invited?
Always.
Okay.
And we seek to notify the community with a word of mouth, a flyer on the bulletin board at the post office. When we had our big meeting, at which you attended, and Commissioner Archeletta came and others, we put it on the radio. We had it in the newspaper. 40 announcements went out to the Domestic Water Association members, and we had it posted at the post office, and at which point, we had seven people turn out from the valley. That's kind of the name of the game.
Did better when you had the 24-3?
Well, the 24-3...
How'd you do that, so you could get more people in?
Well, it was a ditch meeting. It was not announced as a fire meeting. It was a ditch meeting. And the one who publicized it, publicized it adequately among, we deemed, a select few people. And they definitely showed, and they voiced their opinion. And because of that, and, you know, we're sensitive to the issues, to the nuances of politics within a small community, we felt it incumbent upon ourselves to go into another direction, rather than siding with La Lama or Hondo Seco, that we become an independent, self-standing fire district. And this was our decision. And once again, we appreciate your endorsement.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, just for clarification, the vote that was taken was basically taken, whether you wanted to go with Lama or whether you wanted to go with...
Hondo Seco.
Hondo Seco. That was the vote that was taken?
That was...
Okay. That was positive. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Sanchez?
No, that's it.
Anybody else in the audience that'd like to comment, or?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it was stated by Ms. Fabio Romero that day of the meeting that the fire department from Arroyo Ondo has, in fact, stated that they are not interested in serving San Cristobal. And maybe if you can clarify that?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Fabio Romero. I've had a couple of conversations with Chief Jaramillo, which have wandered far and wide on all the subjects possible, one of them being that he has a roster of 22 on his, as active members of his department, and that he frequently finds it hard to find even one person to go with him on a call. And he, at that point, said that having to help San Cristobal would just put an extra burden on him.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, I would also like to clarify some things. It's kind of distressing that so much misinformation floats around the county and that this person says this and that person heard that. And I, maybe we all hear things differently, and then we report differently, and I'm sure that's the case. I think judges and attorneys know that very well, that you get different versions. It distresses me to hear that people are saying that there was a vote of 23 people not to have a fire department. That's just not true. It was a vote not to go with La Lama, but to go with Hondo Seco. It also distresses me to hear that we're a self-selected board. I was called... There was a board that existed in San Cristobal, and I was called one night by Dennis Alonia, who was on that board, and told, "You've just been named secretary to this board. Would you like to help?" And I said, "Didn't anybody else volunteer?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Okay, I'll do it." The same thing happened to Peggy Nelson. She was selected in abstention. So it was not a self-selected board, as has been reported in the community. And that needs... The people in the community need to hear that. And I, we keep repeating, anybody else wants to serve, please raise your hand. There's a great need for a lot of people to help, but it's often the case that they don't. And about the only help we get is like backstabbing or backbiting or misinformation. The reason we... I will reiterate the story of my neighbor who was very, very sick about three weeks ago. And by the time the ambulance took 40 minutes to get to him, by the time they got to him, his heart had stopped. And they got it started again. And Chief Jaramillo told me himself that he was given wrong information by dispatch, and they went in the wrong direction, and so they were lost. And he was leading the ambulance in the search and rescue truck. And Chief Jaramillo said he didn't know where this particular person, Mr. Poyar, lived. And like I said last week, we would have known where Mr. Poyar lives. And that's why it's so much more important that we have our own department in our own valley to serve our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioner?
Mr. Romero. I asked you this last meeting, last Tuesday, if there was property that had been donated. You said there wasn't. I talked to Mr. Cordova. Felipe, he had not deeded it, but he did donate the land.
Yes, he did. He had actually, we had actually prepared a deed for him. The deed was made out to the county, because we're quite aware that the county needs to own the property. Then I went to record it, and they wanted $25 because I wasn't a name on the deed. So I returned it to Felipe, and I said, "If you record it, you only have to pay $5." So since we didn't have any money, I said... And then all this whole controversy came up about La Lama and Hondo Seco, and he withdrew his deed. He pulled back his property by... But I understand that he's willing to give it again. But there are two other people who have also volunteered to give us land.
Mr. Romero, $25 is nothing compared to what you have gotten, correct?
I'm sorry?
$25 is nothing compared to what you have gotten. If you had paid the $25 for Felipe, I'm sure he'd have reimbursed it, you're right?
No. There was no reason for him to reimburse anybody.
Well, because that way, he already had the property. He's just going to deed it. You came...
Well, the county would have had the property.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah. But then you guys would have had your fire department, a place to set it in. We would have got the deed, and the money would have come in to get the fire department going.
Well, no. It was during my trying to record the property that I also went to the 24-3. It was during my trying to record the property that I also went to the, to Anita Padilla at purchasing, to try to set up an account for us to receive the money from the legislature. That's when we discovered we weren't an official fire department, and we couldn't access the money, and we couldn't access the property either.
And that's a year probation, right, Alan? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. Oh, sorry about that, go ahead.
Reminded Eric that maybe he should've done this. We just wanted clarification, and we wanted to be sure that what was done last week was in the nature of a resolution, if in fact a resolution is required, rather than just a motion. So, that's a question, and if something additional needs to be done, we would just ask it to be done.
Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, I've looked at the statute since the last meeting, and there will need to be a formal resolution, and I'll...
You say there will be?
There will need to be a formal resolution, and I'll bring it before you.
Would that be a separate item on an agenda?
It would be.
Okay.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also, Ms. Nelson, the vote was taken in support of the fire department, so that's...
Pardon me?
We'll get that resolution.
Yes, yes, and we just wanted to be sure that we understood there was a resolution, and then it would be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Just your name for the record, please.
My name's Tim Segura, I'm the Fire Chief of Amalia-Pintaro Fire Department. And, excuse me, I just wanted to talk about being in support of this fire department, only because we're kind of in the same boat where we're at. Amalia-Costia, now that I was coming down, I kind of calculated the mileage, and it's approximately seven miles from La Lama and seven miles from Hondo Seco. So, you have that lag time right there, that response time that Chief was talking about, and that's how we kind of are in Amalia and Costia, we have a seven-mile difference. And our response time on emergency calls, it takes a little bit longer, I mean, 10 minutes compared to if Costia responds, they're there in five minutes, or three minutes, whatever, whatever the thing is. But to, just to be in, just to be in support of this fire department, I think it would be a great benefit to the, to the community of San Cristobal, having their own district, their own fire department there, and not having to wait that 10, 15 minutes response time from Hondo Seco or from La Lama. Now, that response time can be greatly, it can, it can go up a lot more if the weather conditions, I mean, everything plays a factor into response times. So, them having their own fire department in San Cristobal, I think it would be a benefit to them and to the community, and also to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else, please?
My name is Roy Blaze, I'm Fire Chief of Lama Fire Department. I wanted to state two things. Most of the San Cristobal Fire Department has trained with us. We have made most of them probationary members. Two of them are actually full members. We have an open policy, we've got a member of ours that's a Taos Fire member. So, anyway, we train, we, once a month, we train diligently, I think our training is pretty good. Two of the members that we voted in as members from San Cristobal went through the Intended Circle, Regional Fire Protection Association mini-academy, and they went through the Wildland Course, Forest Service 130, 190, et cetera. They are about as well-trained as they can be right now. They know what they're talking about, and they've got the background to run a fire department. And that's Eric and Joseph. We've got, like I said, others training with us. Attendance is sporadic, but hopefully will be good, anyway. The other thing is that we have run all the way to Amalia, I hope Costa quite a bit, Lautier, Cerro, Hondo Seco, Taos, we go up to two peaks, three peaks area for structured There is, at least north of us, and we've all talked about it, and fire departments agree that there's no one fire department up there that can handle a full structure fire. They've got equipment, it's the personnel, it's the people. If we had one more fire department up there, we'd have more equipment and more personnel coming to these fires. To me, it's very important that Tim from Amalia can have us page from Taos Central, and we're on our way and going out there, and vice versa. I think it's very important to have a bunch of dedicated, small, but dedicated fire departments with equipment and personnel to fill that gap.
Any questions? None. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
I'm Deke Willis, I'm the Fire Chief of Wheeler Peak, which is a county. I'm also Deputy Chief of Red River, and I'm also the Chairman of the Enchanted Circle Regional Fire Association. And we're just here to give our support for the San Cristobal Fire Department. We're looking forward to training with them, training their personnel, and helping them out in any way that we can. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. No other? Thank you, thank you for your good comments, thank you for the opportunity that you guys shared with us, so thanks again. So, we'll go ahead and move on then to, thank you for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and move on to item six, E-911, JPA Proposals for the, by the Town of Taos for Discussion, Consideration, Decision, and I'd like to recognize Councilman Peralta for being here, the Town Manager, Oscar Rodriguez, and Assistant County, Town Manager, Abigail Adame, for also being here. Mr. Malone, I think you're gonna spearhead this one, and appreciate all the time you've taken and worked on this issue.
Mr. Chairman?
And Bob, before you get started, I know this is a complex issue, and one of the things that, in doing some research, this is the only private building that is being proposed as a 911 in the state, is that correct? I kind of looked around in the state, and I didn't see any other facilities that were either owned by the town or owned by the county, but none that were owned by a private...
Mr. Chairman, I have not personally researched that, but my understanding from our technical folks is that that's the case.
I know it's, you know, I was just looking to try to figure out, you know, is something that we can really follow, even with the JPA that was proposed from our neighbor, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, what I've been asked to do, and what I'm gonna try to do, is identify what I'll call the major or key issues about the two JPAs, and then be available for questions about any other details. One is a 13-page document, the other is a 15-page document. We'd be here till midnight if I tried to go through every, every provision. So, I've identified four major points that I think are important for this commission to be aware of and focus on. The first is that this commission has always made it clear to the town that it required a weighted voting system on any Board of Directors for a JPA, to reflect the fact that the county would pay the majority, more than half, of the cost of 911. And neither of these two proposed JPAs do that. Both of them provide for an initial six members on the JPA Board of Directors, two from the town, two from the county, one from the ski valley, and one from Costa. And then that six-person group chooses a seventh person. And, so I think that this commission needs to be aware that neither proposal provides what you have made clear to me on a number of occasions, and voted on from, in these public meetings, that, that you require a weighted voting system, and that has not been proposed in either of the, either of the two proposals. The second point that you have made very clear to me and to the public in your sessions is that in order to enter into a JPA, there would have to be a provision that the JPA group could, on 90 days' notice, leave the Kit Carson facility. And while one of the two proposals has what I call a possible 90-day provision, it is not an assured 90-day provision. And let me explain what I mean by that. The county has always spoken to the town in terms of there being a sublease for two years from the town to the county for the, or to the JPA, not to the county, but to the JPA, for the Kit Carson facility with provision of a 90-day notice to terminate. So that if the decision were made by the JPA, that they would rather be in a different location than the Kit Carson facility, they could do that. Proposal number two has no provision at all for a 90-day notice. Proposal number one first requires an assumption of the Kit Carson lease, if some of, if the major objection, one of the major objections to the Kit Carson lease can be remedied. In that case, if there were an assumption of the Kit Carson lease, there is no provision in the Kit Carson lease for 90-day termination provision. If the accommodation could not be made with Kit Carson to allow the assumption of the Kit Carson lease by the JPA, then the town would enter into a sublease with the JPA, again, for that two-year period. That would have a 90-day termination provision, so there's no assurance of a 90-day termination provision. If the provision in proposal one, that there be an assumption of the Kit Carson lease prevails, there is no provision for a 90-day termination. So, that's the second point, there's no assured 90-day termination provision, and this commission has always made clear that it requires that 90-day provision. The third key issue is that both proposals provide for the shares of the partners for a brief period of time, for an initial period. In the proposal number one, it's a two-year period, which would be the 55-45 provision that we've often talked about. And in proposal number two, it's not entirely clear when the 40, 53-43, 2-2 provision comes into play, but it's only for the current fiscal year, for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. Thereafter, the shares that each partner in the JPA would owe to the JPA, whatever the percentage was, would be determined by the JPA Board. And it strikes me as important for this commission to understand that there's no assurance of a particular formula, particular mechanism for determining exactly what everybody's shares would be. You would be entering a long-term agreement without knowing beyond the first year or two what your share would be. Thereafter, your share would be determined by the JPA Board. And that's, that's of concern to me, that you enter into a long-term agreement without knowing upfront what at least the formula is for your share. For example, when Mr. James and I were attempting to negotiate a JPA, before that got diverted along some other pathways, we had focused on a provision that would have provided that the financial obligations of each of the partners would be based upon call volume, and that the call volume would be based upon where an incident occurred. So that, for example, if an incident occurred within the town limits, that call would be credited against their call volume. If a incident occurred within the ski valley or within Costa, that call would be credited to their call volume, and the rest of the county would be credited to the county's call volume. And then each year, you would look at the previous year's call volume, figure out the percentages, and that would be what everybody owed. That seemed like a fair and reasonably objective way of doing it. But both of these two JPA proposals lack a mechanism like that, and instead, just leave it up to the discretion of the JPA Board. The final point is more of a, kind of a lawyer's catch-all category, and that is that both of these proposals have a number of what I call nuts-and-bolts provisions that would really have to be refined before I could recommend that this commission agree to either of those two JPAs. And I've given you a written summary of some examples, but one example, for example, is that in JPA Proposal Number One, there are two different and inconsistent termination provisions. And I'm not being critical of anybody over that. That happens in legal documents all the time, and that's why lawyers have to sit down and go over them and try to resolve those kinds of inconsistencies. But one provision provides for a majority vote of the popular, popular majority vote, or the unanimous agreement of all of the members of the JPA. Another provision on the very same page says a simple majority of the JPA can terminate it. That's an example of the, the kind of thing that needs to be addressed. So, this has not been an exhaustive analysis of each of the two proposals, they're, they're different proposals, they're very different proposals, but it's highlighted what I think the key issues are that you have made me aware of in the past that are important to this commission, and I stand open for questions about them.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Malone and Commissioners, with that being said, we had stated to Mr. Malone what we wanted on this. The town has, to my thinking, hasn't even met us halfway, you know? So, my recommendation is, we had already voted that we're gonna go on our own to the planning department, and that's the way it should be.
Commissioners, Commissioner Blinkton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Neither, neither entity can afford to go on their own, and so, from a budget perspective and from a safety perspective, that's not gonna work. Mr. Malone, which of these would you choose, excepting the, the controversies that you have identified for us? Which of the two would you say is closest to workable?
As between the two, Proposal One is closer to workable than Proposal Two.
Well, my suggestion is, then, to accept Proposal One, except for the weighted provision, which could be fixed by changing the seventh position from being voted on by the other six members to being some, a person named by the county that would take care of the weighted positioning, which would bring us back to a 3-2-1-1. And as, as you said, Mr. Malone, that's something that the Board has reiterated its, as a requirement. I think it's a, not an unreasonable requirement for the county to make, given the fact that, that we are going to be expected to place the most resources into this partnership because of the call volume. So, that would take care of number one, and number two could be... And number two could be taken care of by insisting upon a sublease with a 90-day provision. I think that's also a reasonable request, given the fact that there is a lot of questions about the ultimate location, the ultimate best location for this. As to the budget, I agree with you, Mr. Malone. It would not be wise to enter into a long-term agreement without a formula in place. And I think that the one that you and Mr. James had hit upon is a very sensible one, which would base it on call volume based on the location of the incident. And finally, the nuts-and-bolts discrepancies, I would think that you and Mr. James could work out by cleaning out the language. And so that's my preference. This is such an important issue for Taos County. It's so critical that we find a way to work with the other governing body, the Town of Taos. I know that it's been a long, hard process, but I do believe we're making progress. I think that we have, the first JPA that's been presented to us has, 90% of the language is inarguable. It's necessary, and it's useful to actually setting up this type of an agreement. So I think that we are down to these four points that our attorney has identified. And so that's my preference, and I'll make that in the form of a motion. A rather long motion, admittedly, but...
Mr. Chairman, so I guess, just to understand, Commissioner Blankenhorn, his motion also includes the idea of moving into the Kit Carson building.
No, if I may, it has no bearing on the eventual location. Obviously, dispatch is currently being operated from the Kit Carson Building. And the JPA governing body would, one of their first steps would be to assess what's going on at the Kit Carson Building, to assess the, both the effectiveness and the needs going forward. I think that everybody agrees that we need an upgrade of equipment. We don't need a new JPA Board to understand that the receivers are not going to provide us with the kind of dispatch that we all want going forward. And I am sure that the governing body from the JPA would address that as capital expenditures going forward. And of course, they would also have to ultimately make the decision, is this going to work at Kit Carson, or is this going to require a move to the Planning Department Building with the concurrent expenditures required?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone and Rick, with regards to the JPA governing body, I know that there was a letter from Mayor Cordova that went out to, I believe, the mayor of Cuesta and Taos Ski Valley. Do you know what those replies have been? Have there been any? Maybe Counselor Hadamio? Have any of those replies come in from Cuesta?
Commissioner, none has come across my email.
Okay. So do we know what they want to do at this point? Mr. Bellis?
In the case of the Ski Valley, no. That's the only one I can say with certainty. We received an email from the manager, I believe it was addressed to Mr. Archuleta, in which he stated that we're kind of sitting this one out, and you guys figure out what you want to do. And then he listed three things that they would like to see in there in their interest, one of which was the same or close to or less than what they're paying now, a seat on the Board. And I'm sorry, but I don't remember what the third one was, but it was pretty consistent with what we've discussed all along and that the town and the county have agreed with.
And nothing from Cuesta, then?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Romero, I just, I don't know if that was actually a request from the mayor. I know we have a councilman here and the manager, so maybe they can report that, but that was just a letter that was basically sent out from the city of, or the village of Taos Ski Valley.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from Mayor Peralta and the staff from the town as to what exactly is that they want today.
Before he goes on, Commissioner, again, I think that we just need one command center. I think if we, the town, the county, can work together in doing this, I know that this JPA Board, which is before us today, is creating this JPA Board to put it in the hands of the professionals that know this E911, they know the infrastructure. I think that's the most important thing here, provided we can provide the best possible service to our constituents within our respective budgets. I think that's important also. So you think that we can come together? I know that we've been kicking this ball back and forth for...
Eleven months.
Quite a while now. And, you know, I think it's time, if, you know, there's, we're so close, but yet, you know, can we, is it something that we can work with and get this behind us?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mayor Peralta, I mean, Counselor Peralta, first of all, let me say is that we have relied on professional staff already that our county manager has put together.
Yes.
And they are the ones that have been advising us. And let me just say, that's why many months ago, I would have been able to have made this decision, and we wouldn't be here tonight anymore. Just say that.
Thank you. Commissioner, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, if I could, as I addressed to you last week when we brought you over the drafts, what we did is we tried to put together a package that gave as much weight to the MOU as we possibly could with a few tweaks to it. And I said that before. This is not something that is absolutely set in stone, that the council will not do anything other than that. What the council was trying to do is put something on the table for us to look at and to discuss and to work on that was in black and white. What I request, and I think the, I can speak for the council on this, is that we would like to have something back from the county in black and white that we can work with. What Mr. Malone has talked about are the same discussions that I have had with the council in discussion about the proposal we put before you. And so what we are interested in is seeing exactly the language. I think the reason that in Proposal Number One, that is in there, that the Board will decide how, in which fashion, the entities would be putting in the revenues to support the center in the fashion that's in there, is because the discussions are going in many different directions. And so we needed to put something in there to say that the Board will be able to do this. But we weren't able to, in my understanding of the discussions, couldn't come to an agreement as to what kind of language was needed in there. Now, tonight, Mr. Malone has indicated a preference, and that, I think, would be a welcome addition to this, if we can see that language, as to see how that's going to play out. Because it was going back with the population, or is it going to be this sort of a relationship or that relationship? And so I think that if we can get some specific language in there as to how you think that we can determine the relationship between the members, that would be very important. I, in looking at the language on the 90-day move or not move, I felt was very convoluted. But I think it tried to address too many things, and I think what Mr. Malone is talking about is a good possibility to bring it in a little more distinct and simple in language. And the same thing with the Board. I think that we would be interested in seeing how the county would like to see the, if they want a weighted Board, how that lays out so that we can see specifically how that works, from the county's understanding. But this is what we need to see, is language amendments to the JPA that are in black and white, so that we can look at them as a governing body, just as you are, and that's why we presented it to you as a governing body, to look at it and see if there isn't some way that we can come to an understanding of language, but not so much that, but the operational language that is necessary for us to make this thing to work. And I think we're very interested in doing that. We are also very interested in upgrading the equipment that's in the center. As I mentioned before, in my understanding, that maybe talking about a lease for that equipment, I think that works into our budgetary process. If we had to come up with cash upfront, that would not work at the present time. But a long-term lease agreement or lease purchase agreement, I think that can be worked in. So I think we understand each other. I think it's just now a matter of trying to come down with some specific language for us to look at and see if we can't agree to that language and make this thing work. I think we're very close, and I do appreciate your time and your effort on this. I think that we all have the same thing that the chairman indicated, is that this is for the citizens of our community, not for us.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, with regards to the current JPA, what is the status on that? I know that the town had voted at a previous meeting to turn that around, that agreement that they had, they had set a deadline for a certain day in February of next year. Is that still in effect? Is that no longer a deadline that's on the table?
I have to give you a longer, rather than a simpler, answer, and I apologize for that, Commissioner, but the town informed us at our last meeting that they had rescinded their termination of their participation in the JPA. In my legal opinion, that only can happen. You can't take back a termination, except if the other parties agree. So yes, it could be that that's off the table, as long as the other three parties agree. I don't think that you, for example, you have a lease with somebody, and you tell that person, "I'm terminating the lease," and they go out and take a number of steps. And then you tell them, before it's actually up, "Well, I'm taking that back." You can't do that unilaterally. They could agree with you to let you take it back. So I don't think it unilaterally can happen in quite that way, but the four partners could all agree that the termination is taken back. And let me make one other point, try to clarify one other point. The existing JPA, the one that's been in place since at least 1998, I understand there were some predecessors to that, but in its current form since 1998, the provision doesn't allow one party to terminate the entire JPA on one year's notice. It allows that party to terminate their participation in the JPA on one year's notice. So that's, now, since the town is the fiscal agent and the operator, the practical effect is to terminate the JPA. But I just want to be clear that it's not a termination of the JPA per se.
And so, Mr. Chairman, I want to call you Mayor Peralta. Counselor Peralta, what has the town, what steps have you taken, then, to clarify that position that you took a few weeks ago? And what is the status on that at this point?
It's my understanding, the only thing that we've done is, in a council meeting, taken a formal vote to back off of the position we took to terminate the JPA. Now, I can't say, and I'd have to ask our manager as to whether or not there were formal letters given to the participants in that as far as notifying them that position by the council. So that's all I can say at that point. And I think that each one of the members' attorneys has their opinion as to what steps need to be taken on your part at this point.
So, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Rodriguez, what are the steps, then? Are you in? Are you out?
We're in and you're in, from our position. And I say this with advice from our attorney. The current JPA is the one in force. We have notified all the parties that we would consider it terminated in February. We've announced to everybody formally, in written form, that we are rescinding that notice. So that's what stays in force, as best we can determine.
And so the current JPA that is in force, then, how does that differ to what has been proposed? Can you even start to compare any of it?
It's strange that all three of us look at each other and smile. Light moment. The differences are huge. I mean, there's less similarity than there is commonality between the two. The current JPA is operated by the town without the participation of the partners, except as to the budget process once a year.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Rodriguez, do you wish to continue doing that?
No, sir. No, sir, we want to get into a new JPA. In fact, I agree 100% with the county attorney here. Really, truly, I would even go a little bit further. I'd say it's JPA in name only, really what it is. It's a contract for services. If you look at the JPA, second page starts out, "The Town of Taos operates it." There's no, there's no instance for consultation. Really, the only role of the other parties are to pay or not to pay. And that was never acceptable to us. I mean, as I understand the history, and Mr. Peralta was mayor at that time, but I understand the history, it was a quickly-made agreement, really, to tide over the times, everyone thinking that it was going to be updated and things were going to change over time. It never got there. I mean, I guess I understand now why. But it is our desire, it always has been our desire, to enter into a new JPA where you are, at least, at very least, equal partners. And if you desire to be the operators, I would urge, and I've said this to you in private and said this in public as well, I would recommend that that be the case, if the county wants to be the fiscal agent and the operators, you know, so long as it's done in a, in a way that prioritizes 911 services. I think all the parameters are there, I think, for a good agreement.
You've had, Mr. Chairman, you've had discussions with Taos Ski Valley or Cuesta at all?
No, after this, after subsequent to our issuing the letter to them, no, other than that email that we both got from Ski Valley saying that, "Look, you agree among yourselves, we'll let us know when you're there."
Commissioner, Dr.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I don't see how this commission can trust the town. You know, this town or the council is a wishy-washy. They do one decision, then they back off, you know? I don't see how this commission can even trust these people.
Bob, and just a very quick comment to Commissioner Romero's question about the Ski Valley and Cuesta. I don't want my silence to leave this unclear. The Ski Valley and Cuesta did send lawyers over about a 30, for about the first 30 days after the MOU, Mr. James and I and lawyers for the Ski Valley and for Cuesta worked many, many hours massaging the San Juan County JPA and had addressed many of the nuts-and-bolts points that I talked about earlier. So they have been involved in that process, perhaps not in the rest of the process.
And Mr. Malone, if you would just stay up there for a second, I just want to run a scenario by you. Tell me if I'm correct or not. In the event that we were to give, I guess, you the authority to work on this JPA with the Town of Taos, with the recommendations of this Board, to correct those three or four spots... four spots, then bring it back. And the reason I'm saying this is because if this JPA is in force, that is currently in place, that we then have a little bit of time, it's winter. I know there's three commissioners that have, there's a motion in place that they're proceeding with, but it is winter time right now, and to move on construction of anything is twice as expensive in the winter. And this would give you some time and save the county money so that we can just have one E-911 wherever the JPA board would decide it would go. It wouldn't, is that correct?
Let me make sure I understand the question, Mr. Chairman, and that is, if this commission's direction to me was to draft a JPA and/or work with Mr. James further with these four points that we've identified, could that be done by the lawyers? Yes, it could be done. Whether we get to the final result, I mean, I can't guarantee that.
Right, right. I understand that. But with their rescension of the termination of the JPA allows, there is additional time that the, there is a JPA in place that would cover us for the next period of time?
There is additional time as long as all of the partners agree to their retraction of their termination.
And I guess the question that the town would have then is, what amount would we be then contributing? Because it was brought up several times by the town and by our staff, that MOU that was in place, I think spelled out that there was a difference between 371 and I think 255.
287.
287?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
287 and 371.
That's correct.
And I understand through the MOU, if a JPA was to be reached, then that 371 would be in place. Is that correct, Mr. Archibald?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that that's something that would be negotiated in the JPA. The county's position on the difference between the 387 and the, or the 371 and the 287 is that in the negotiation process, we had budgeted $371,000 to do that, but we had been asking for budgets and for clarification on that. Those talks unfortunately fell through. And so our perspective at this point is that we are still in the JPA, and we're paying $287,000. The most that that can increase if the parties do not agree is 7% for that year, but the parties also have to vote on that. So first, we have to be given notice of that and that there should be an increase, and then hopefully a justification. But the most that it could increase would be 7%, unless the commission and the parties agree to the 371.
And that's the position that the JPA that is in place today takes, correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're recommending then that we continue to agree to stay at the Kit Carson facility?
I, we're there now. I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying is, let's get this JPA in place. If the attorneys can get it in place, we have a little bit more time now before, because again, it is winter time. We have professional staff that work for us that are even saying that, "It's winter time. We don't want to build or construct anything in the winter because it's a lot more expensive." And there is some questions about all the money, how it's going to pull together, and we just want, and I think there's some time that we can probably maybe get some better pricing, possibly.
But we would stay at Kit Carson Electric Co-op or at the building?
For the present time while this is being negotiated, until we can...
And, Mr. Chairman, is the JPA, the joint powers agreement, are the members, the governing body of a JPA authorized then to make a recommendation as to whether or not they want to stay at the new Kit Carson building, or if they in fact want to move on to another building, as we had proposed from the Taos County perspective? Do they have that authority, Mr. Malone?
Currently, under the current JPA or under a new JPA?
In any type of JPA, is a governing body of JPA members authorized to be able to commit the county and everyone else to stay at a location? For example, the Kit Carson location? Or does that have to come back to the governing boards?
No. That, in the various versions of the JPA, the JPA board would decide upon the location. Now, that requires, the point that I made with the commission at the very beginning, that there be a 90-day notice provision. Without that 90-day notice provision, it doesn't matter what a JPA board decides. And it's crucial that that JPA board be one that's weighted. I mean, if it's not weighted, then you have less confidence in its decision.
And Commissioner Blankenhorn, your idea is that it doesn't have to be weighted? Or that it does have to be weighted?
No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Romero, if I wasn't clear. My idea is that it has to be weighted. And I suggested that under the, it's basically the San Juan Board formula that they've used, but we tweak that so that the seventh member, rather than being voted upon and decided upon by the other six, is decided upon by us.
Us meaning?
By us, meaning Taos County. And that gives us our third vote. Everything else stays the same. The Town of Taos has their two choices. Cuesta and the Ski Valley also have a choice. Eventually, hopefully with other partners, they too would get a choice.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, just real quick, just to finish that point, is that included in the list that you have in there should be the county manager and the county fire chief as potential choices for Taos County to make. And obviously, if the town chose, the town manager, that too could be added to the list.
So, Mr. Chairman, Councilor Peralta, do you think your board would agree to that?
I can't say for certain, but I know that they would consider it. And that's as far as I can go on that. Now, there's one last thing that I would like to say, and that is that JPA number one is I authored. I wrote that with a few amendments by the council. As part of that, though, I need to let the commission know that the request that I have is that the county provide us with language that they want. I do not want our attorneys sitting down and arguing over language. I want your attorney and your staff and yourselves to determine the language you would like to see in the JPA, and that be proposed to us, and we will consider that. And if we have a counter to that, it will be a counter from the council and not from staff. And I think that's the proper way for us to go about this if we're going to negotiate this thing. I think it hasn't worked behind, in the back rooms. And so I think that it needs to be out in front of us, and this is my request, is that this be, so we know specifically what the county's feelings are and where they would like to be, and not something that gets mulled over. I don't want it mulled over anymore. I think that's going the wrong way for us, and it's taking us too long to come to a decision that way.
Mr. Chairman, can I take that as a second on my motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to make a comment. You know, Mr. Chairman, you and Mr. Blankenhorn are just prolonging this deal. Once you give them the okay to set up a JPA with that board, you're just selling the county down the road. Because I do not agree, and this is why, because I've been on this as a commissioner for seven years, it's going to work the same thing that the landfill board works. They have control, and we don't have no say. And that's what's going to happen here, and if you people want to sell the county down the road, so be it, but not on my vote.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Chairman, while it might not factor in as a point of accuracy, there are other deadlines here that impact this before you make your decision. And one of them is that you gave two directions prior to the staff. One was to proceed on the $400,000 for the construction. The second one was that an MOU be drafted that reflected some timeframes and conditions. And there was a 90-day timeframe that was extended to the rescission to the JPA that the town had. At the end of that 90 days, if a new JPA is not approved by the governing bodies of the parties within the 90-day period provided for in this document, the county shall have the option in its sole discretion, but not the obligation, of becoming the fiscal agent, which was the one thing you asked us that you wanted to be, the operator, which was the second thing, and the designated PSAP for the E-911 dispatch operations for the remaining period of the existing JPA and thereafter pursuant to the terms of the MOU as set out below. The county shall exercise this option by notifying the Town of Taos within 15 days to the end of the 90-day period, which would require you to take action at your December 6th meeting if you to invoke that.
That's not correct. The 90 days, the MOU was adopted on September 24th, October, November, December. December 24th is the end of the 90 days. It's 15 working days after December 24th. Just clarification on the time.
Okay. And the other one would be that if you do agree, as the county attorney had said, that it would require you to agree that the town was back in and the current JPA was back in force, that would similarly obligate you to the same one-year notification deadline that they provided earlier. Could there not be a JPA?
Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick comment. I want to be sure that we're clear on what 3211 weighted voting means. If there's a total of seven votes and the county has three, then as long as the county has one additional partner joining it in a position, it would then have a majority. We would not have a majority of the votes by ourselves, but with one additional partner, we would have a majority. And that seems like a fair reflection. Actually, it's bending over backwards in a way because we're paying a majority of the expenses and not having a majority of the votes all to ourselves. But the county plus one partner would equal a majority.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a feeling that we would end up paying the majority of the expenses anyway, no matter what. Just my opinion.
Do you have a couple of people that were wanting to make comments, Jeff?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'll be brief. My notes are more tangled than usual, given the discussion we've had. And I don't really understand anything about MOUs and JPAs that you're negotiating with the town. It's not my area of expertise, but I do have a few thoughts. I'd like the JPA to direct a new authority to aggressively move on the training of E-911 dispatchers, to be of more help during medical and fire emergencies, and also be of help to people who are dealing with violence while they're on the phone with E-9111. And I think you also might direct that authority to immediately begin addressing the problems of the transmission towers and the repairs that need to be done with them. I don't understand why Cuesta is paying nothing into the pot according to the proposal number one, which seems to be the one that you've directed, Mr. Malone, the work off of, or under proposal number two, they're only paying 2% of the costs, the yearly cost of the E-911. Cuesta has 1,700 residents, one-third the size of Taos. I don't understand why they're not paying anything. And neither proposal mentions the Taos Pueblo, and they were a small partner in the current JPA and paying much less than their share. As best I can determine, there's about 1,100 members of the Pueblo, which would be 20% of the size of the Town of Taos. So why are not they paying 20% of the costs, at least 20% as much as the town pays? The E-911 governing board seems as though it will have seven members, and with the county and town each having two directors, and the Taos Ski Valley and Cuesta, one director and one director chosen by that board at large. Now, that's been discussed much in the last hour or so. But the town and county are both way underrepresented, given their population and financial contributions. This could be remedied in various ways, which you've spoken about already, especially Mr. Blankenhorn. But even the suggestions that have been made seem to me to don't begin to address the unevenness, and they're not weighting the votes correctly, I don't think. I would think that if you want, you could increase the size of the board, pack the board with more members of the town and county, but that could get unwieldy. But possibly each county person on that board could have two, three, or maybe even four votes, and the same with the town. They could have two, three, or four votes, or Cuesta and Taos Ski Valley could have one vote between the two of them. Just ways of weighting it that reflect population and financial contributions. But it's ridiculous for Taos Ski Valley to have one vote, and the Town of Taos to have two votes, and the county to have two votes. It just doesn't make any sense at all. The contract also says that each director or his representative shall have one vote, and yet there's no explanation as what a representative is. But a representative can vote in place of a director, so I think that needs to be detailed a little better. It doesn't direct, it doesn't mention, the JPAs do not mention if the directors are to receive any compensation. And it would be a shame not to have one of the seven people on the board be an attorney, and possibly that could be one of the provisions, is that seventh person chosen, be an attorney if there's not already a attorney among the six. Finally, I've served on many boards, and I'm aware of the tendency of directors not to attend meetings or come late or leave early. Absence needs to be defined in the JPAs that you're looking at to say missing more than 10 minutes of a meeting. The JPAs you're looking at now have the directors being thrown off if they miss three meetings in a row. And again, I would like to say that missing a meeting would be missing more than 10 minutes of a meeting. And in addition to looking at being thrown off if you miss three meetings in a row, possibly you'd also be thrown off if you missed four out of six meetings. And that's one other thing. I know there was some talk from time to time about the federal government at some point requiring rural areas to have combined dispatch centers, much bigger than we have now, even going to Angel Fire as far as what we might be looking at, Angel Fire and Mora, Eagle Nest, and possibly parts of Rio Riba County. So you might look into the possibility of that happening as you address the final JPA and see what influence it might have. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Cordova, you want to comment?
My name's Arsenio Cordova, and I'm from El Prado. You guys bring a lot of excitement to an issue, you know, and I really think that the big excitement comes from the Town of Taos. Oscar will leave here and tomorrow morning be with Nancy's staff, telling you how untrustworthy you guys are. Fred will be with him, or Andrew will be with him, and they'll all say how their proposals are the best, and it wouldn't do it. And I don't know, you know, I think that fiscally we are heading into maybe a disaster or something, but until that is resolved, you know, the commission here has been making an effort, not only here, but with the airport, with El Prado, all these other issues. And I've been watching it very, very closely. And as a constituent, I must say that this stalling tactic by the town is a travesty. And they are only stalling, you gentlemen, until time runs out on that JPA, when you'll not be able to make a decision at all. You know, the safety of the county... You know, the safety of the county is in jeopardy right now, but you know, Oscar would rather go to Nancy Staff and talk about making a dual position for dog catcher and code enforcement. You know, I'd like to see that job description, you know, when the town releases that. The town has taken a bully pulpit, and you know, Mr. Peralta, Mr. Rodriguez, mayor, this message is for you. Taking the bully pulpit is going to be your downfall. You have the power of the radio station. And we saw the article last week in the paper where how much advertising monies you are giving to your mayor. As a council, $22,000 a year in just a few years, it gone from $2,300 a year. And I, you know, I feel betrayed by the city, library fees for the county people and things like that. We all shop in your town, and you charge us taxes when we come in here. But taking the bully pulpit has been your modus operandi. I feel that this stalling tactic is only not, the JPA could have been resolved a heck of a long time ago. And now we come at the 11th hour saying, you know, let's do it again. Let's stall it until the next meeting. I'm not sure my council members will go along with it, but you know, they might consider it. Well, you already know how you're going to vote, and you're going to stall it as long as you want. A motion was made here, and I've been following this for a long time, I think it was a 3-2 vote, to go forth with a position where we could have really done our homework and set up an E-911 for the health and safety of our county. You know, just you, no budget is high enough that protects a member of the community. So I would ask that, you know, actually Roberts will have order, call for no discussion until the motion is seconded, Mr. Blankenhorn, but I haven't heard anybody second the motion, but I'm glad that they're giving us a discussion. So anyway, I would like to commend the county for the efforts that they have made, not only on this issue, but on the annexation, the airport, and you know, I hope that you will continue to serve your constituents the way you have been. And as for the town, tomorrow, whenever they have their meeting, they will again vote to bring forth another JPA that Mr. Malone will not agree with or, you know, or mumble his words out there in a threatening way to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordova.
Anything further, Bob?
Chairman, I have nothing further unless there's questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have to be honest. I've gone through two funerals today. Luckily, no wedding. I'm quite tired. I know that Commissioner Blankenhorn had a motion, but it's very difficult to understand, for me to understand at this point. It's full of too many points and too many paragraphs and just too much information. And I just cannot make that decision today, you know, based on what Commissioner Blankenhorn has suggested, Mr. Chairman. And so I still feel that our staff needs to come back and give us a chart of pros and cons as to whether or not we should go at this on our own, or if we continue the year-long negotiations of joint power agreement and such. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, okay, we do have a motion on the floor. I don't know, it was a long motion. Mr. Blankenhorn, did we want to restate that, or we'll just leave it there?
Well, I could make it shorter if anybody wanted me to, but I could also leave it there. I thought it was pretty clear. There was four points that the attorney identified, and I itemized those with a recommendation for our counterproposal to the town. It's important that we keep moving forward. As Councilman Peralta said, they've given us something in black and white, and they would like something in black and white in return. I think it's incumbent upon us to give them that. These four points are not that difficult or complicated to get our heads around, and I just reiterate my motion to direct our county attorney to put that into writing so that we have something that we can give back to the town and so that we can keep this process moving forward to an all-important agreement on this health and safety issue that neither of us can afford on our own. And I think we're going to find out a little bit more about that on point number seven, where we talk about the budgetary ramifications of all of this.
And in the spirit of moving forward and trying to come to some agreement, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
All abstain.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Oh.
Commissioner Doudon.
Oh.
Chair member.
Yes. We have a 2-2, so there's not an approval to move forward. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Motion fails. The motion stalls. Commissioner Romero, did you have another motion to?
No other discussion at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So no action will be taken on this item at this meeting? So is there a direction to staff commissioners that we'd like to see?
Mr. Chairman, just move on to item, the next item.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, E-911 budget for discussion only. We have staff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Staff is here today to present. We've been asked to talk about some of the budgetary issues around the 911. What you'll hear from staff today is basically the proposal of where the funding would come from, reference 911, what cuts would be made to Taos County as far as services, and where the actual funding would come from. I do want to tell the commission at this point, as I have sent in an email previously to the commission, that Taos County has been notified that because of the sequestration, there is a possibility of about a $1.2 or $1.5 million cut to the county's budget. This is a budget that is general fund revenue, as we have budgeted for the year 2013, 2014, and that money would become available possibly in a June timeframe, May-June timeframe from the federal government, but at this point, we don't know what the status of that is.
Commissioner Romero. Chairman, Steve, do you have a copy of that notice? I did not get it. I don't believe I got it.
I can get you a copy, Commissioner Romero. It was a copy that was sent out to all the commissioners.
And just to go on just a little bit more, we did have the opportunity to meet with the congressman yesterday at the Ag Center, and that was one of the questions that was asked to him about PILT, and it is pretty, I want to say vague right now.
Bleak.
Bleak, that we will receive that, and that is a good portion of our budget. So it is a concern to me, and I hope it's a concern to the rest of our staff.
But, Mr. Chairman, but why all of a sudden the two hit the map now? You know what I mean? Their hand was rolling along okay. Now that we had this discussion about the 911, the PILT money comes up. You know, that's what I don't understand.
Commissioner Doudon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, not sure, as you're well aware, the sequestration has been going on for some time now. Recently, we've seen the closing of the federal government, and because of the vote at the federal government, it looks like, you know, the PILT money along with some of these other tax monies that are out there is being held hostage in order to try to negotiate the federal budget and zero that budget out or bring it into balance. There, as was explained by the chairman, Baroni, we asked that question last night to the congressman and asked what his take on that was, and he basically feels that it is being held hostage. He does feel that it's not going to go anywhere. He did say that in February, this would come up for decision again, whether or not the federal government would stay open or close at that point. But in any case, we have no approval of that. And so it's, you call it coincidence, or, you know, I...
But, Mr. Chairman, though, the thing about it is, I don't think this is a true deal because next year is an election year. When these people do this, they're going to cut their own throat, you know? You know, I don't think it's going to look too good on Ben Ray next time for his election. You know what I mean? If he cuts money out of Taos County, well, you know, I guarantee I won't vote for him.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I could address that...
Mr. Chairman, when was this letter written?
I'm not sure what letter you're referring to. It's a letter.
The one that you're saying you emailed?
If I could approach, I'd take a look at that. That's for the previous year, Commissioner. I can actually get you a copy of the...
Do you have a current letter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a break for like five minutes? I'd like to see that letter.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Take a five-minute break. We have a second. Call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move to come back into session at 6 o'clock.
Do we have a second?
Six.
Do we have a second? Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Doudon.
Yes. Commissioner Romero?
So, I don't have anything to say at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Archuleta?
So Commissioners, if, again, I've put the letter that we received from Mexico Association of Counties, basically, that was dated from Brenda L. Swazel Gillis, Budget and Finance Analyst, Local Government Division. And so what you're seeing is the meat of the actual email that was sent out by Neil O'Connor out of Washington. And basically, what this says is that the President's fiscal year 2014 budget submission to Congress requested a one-year extension for payment in lieu of taxes program. The extension would fund PILT payments for 2014. At present, funding of the payments in lieu of taxes program has not been reauthorized by the federal fiscal year 2014, October 1st, 2013 to September 30th, 2014. As a result, the Department of Interior standard request for acreage and prior year payments data to calculate payments for 2014 that occurs each October will not take place this year. So in case any of you were wondering why we haven't received requests, statements of federal lands, prior year payment reports, that is the reason. Second, I want to inform you that I will be, well, we don't have to read that portion, but that's the whole portion of that is that, you know, in the past, they've actually asked for us to report the acreage, for us to extend in our reports to them for when it's reauthorized. And in talking again with Congressman Ben Ray Lujan last night and asking this question specifically, he reiterated that, and the chairman was there, that this is being held hostage at this point because there is 50 members of Congress that have basically said unless the president can come up with a balanced budget and move that forward, that this will not pass and it will not be in its place.
So, Mr. Chairman, Steve, the $1.5 million that is spent, that is received from PILT, how is it spent? How is it budgeted for this year?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll go ahead and turn this over to the finance manager, and I'll direct you to your monitors, basically, but it's a significant portion of our budget.
We see that it's 12%, but how is that 12% broken down?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yeah, this is just a quick snapshot of how much, you can obviously see the 12%. That 12% is operating. It's part of our general fund balance, and we add it with our property tax and any other GRTs that we receive, and that goes into our general fund, and we do use it for operating. We have cash reserves, and that's where, that's basically the same amount as this $1.4 million. And so, yes, we budgeted for it this year. We budgeted for it based on the difference between the state's fiscal year and the federal fiscal year. When we receive payment in June, we assumed that we would receive it again, so we budgeted for it, not knowing for sure until September 30th, October 1st, when they do their budget. The budget didn't reflect this is going to be approved for this next year. So going forward, the next graph I'll show you is more, this is something I've borrowed from our treasure, and we've seen it a few times, but it's basically the cash flows. And I show you this because of the timing of the payment, which we typically receive in June. That June payment gets us for cash flow purposes. You see where we're at, you see where it drops off significantly on that one bar? That's because that's where we're at currently. That's our probably low point, that's typically the low point for the year in a cash flow situation. We collect property taxes through November, December. You see the high point in December, and that pretty much funds us through the spring. We get the second half of some property taxes in May and June, and then the PILT comes in June, increases our cash balance, and that carries us to this low point where we're at now. Where we'll really feel the pain of the PILT will be next year at about this time, when we have to deal with the cash flow deficiencies then. We'll operate. We're not falling off the end of the earth as our operating budget is going to take this hit because we have reserves. Our cash reserves above the 3/12 required comes to about $1.5 million. We budgeted $1.48 for PILT. So, you know, short term, it's not the kind of thing that's going to shut down the county.
Mr. Cordova, even if we did not receive the PILT funding, we would still have the required 3/12ths?
At year-end, we should. If you'll go to one more graph, I'll show you right now. This is the data that...
Mr. Cordova, if you can give me a yes or no, we'll have the required 3/12ths even if we don't get the PILT funding?
At the end of this fiscal year, yes. My concern and my fear is this time next year, we may not have that 3/12ths.
Well, thank you for that. So let's, in the event that we didn't get the PILT and we had to increase our E-911 budget from $371 to $1 million, how would we handle that if we lost, if we had that additional burden and we lost 12% of our operating budget?
It would be very difficult. Basically, the first place I start looking at this year's budget would be our capital enhancement fund, the 399 fund. There's $600,000 in that fund. If we made no plans for capital improvements, if we purchased no new vehicles, if we do no new road projects, if we deplete everything we have in our IT reserves, we may be able to function with that new reoccurring cost.
Isn't it true that the PILT would eat up that $600,000? Not getting the PILT would require us to use that $600,000 elsewhere?
Yes.
Yes.
Not getting the PILT.
But then, on top of that, if we added another $600,000 to the budget in order to accommodate a $1 million a year E-911 budget, where would that next $600 come from? The first $600 is already gone with PILT. Where would the next $600 come from?
No, maybe I misunderstood. I'm talking about the $600 from the 399 to plug the gap for the operating reoccurring cost of E-911.
Okay.
What we'll lose because losing the PILT will be any other capital expenses, not a new vehicle for probably years, not another road project that we could fund ourselves maybe for years.
But that's... Let me, I'm not finished yet. What would happen to the road budget, the $2 million road budget?
We'll have that budget, but half of that is supplemented from the general fund. That's something else we'll probably have to cut, transfers from the general fund to the road budget.
Okay, so the $2 million that we currently spend on our public works, which gets us what it gets us, we would have to cut that?
Yep, and we would likely have to take a look at cutting EMS. An example is the Penasco Station adds $150,000 a year in reoccurring operating expenses. That's something we didn't have three years ago. You know, those are things that I have to... You know, those are things that I have to look at, those are operating transfers from the general fund to these purposes.
And so the Peñasco Station for EMS, how would that be affected?
We'd have to certainly consider not functioning. And, and there's another thing that we need to consider going forward is healthcare and Obamacare and the mandate on the employer, the county, that's going to take into effect next year. We have about 50 to 60 casual, the part-time workers at any time. If these workers are now required for us to be paying into their health insurance, it's going to add a significant cost to our budget as well.
Is it fair to say that people would most likely lose jobs at the county?
Unfortunately, that may have to be something to consider. It is something you would have to consider, or you may need to consider furloughs, you may need to consider a hiring freeze, these are all decisions that will need to be made probably without the PIL.
Mr. Chairman, obviously, Commissioner Blakenor is trying to use scare tactics like if he was in court here.
I'm asking questions and getting answers.
But what if, what is staff doing to, to bring in other monies to be able to make up for what we can potentially lose?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I, first of all, I think we need to answer your question, which was asked earlier, Commissioner Romero, and that question is, do we have enough to absorb if we lose the PIL? Yes, we do. As you can look up in the board that's in front of you right now, the cash reserves that we used last year, $1.5 million, were broken down and, and taken into consideration. Revenue shortfalls, contingency, we have 154,500, I can't see that, let me, give me that second. You have it here? Here you go. Sorry about that. IT fund, we have 154,865,000 in that. New vehicles, fleet replacement, 154,865. Road fund, we put in 40% of our budget, or of our overall on that, we have 619,458,000. And that's, this is all cash. Building and maintenance, we have 309,729. Planning and design, we have 77,000. And employee compensation, we have 77,432. So if you add that up, basically, it's $1.5 million that we have in cash reserve right now, that if PIL fell off the face of the earth, we basically can make up that shortfall with this. What Mr. Cordova is trying to say is that we have a cash flow in November of next year that we're not actually going to have this reserves available to us for the Commission to move money around, because that money's going to be tied up in all of our day-to-day operations. And so unfortunately, when we're looking at leveraging money, when we're looking at packaging, when we're looking at going after tiger funds on the federal level, we're not going to have the funds to go and try to get that funding back. Can we continue to operate? Yes. Now, staff is looking at several alternatives in this aspect. I'll tell you about something that's going to be presented to the Commission on the 15th of December, which is that we're looking at EMS. Part of the problems that Holy Cross Hospital and EMS Department and myself have had is that there's a lot of people within Taos County that are not able to make it to the hospital because of bus transportation, because their transportation fell through, because of cold weather, because of whatever those issues are. Eventually, those people end up in our emergency rooms throughout the day. And so in an effort to continue to bring in revenues from the Holy, from the ambulance service, basically what we've done is that we've reached out to Holy Cross Hospital and say, can you give us those referrals? We'll send our ambulance out there to check on them, we'll treat the wounds, open wounds if they're diabetics and they have wound issues, so that these people don't show up in our emergency room. The good thing for Taos County is that they get the service, the people don't actually, you know, if they miss their appointment or they don't make it to the hospital for whatever reason, we get to get out there and provide the service to them, which is a very vital service. Hopefully, those people won't show up at our emergency room, and Taos County can charge for that. We're also in negotiations right now, Mota has asked us to consider providing services out for Mota out of our Peñasco base. What that would entail is basically putting another ambulance in the Mota base, but they would actually supplement that for us. So between the Peñasco and Mota base, we could supplement that whole area, and we would actually bring in cash revenues for that. So those are different things that, that the county is looking at. We've also went across the board and have basically mentioned to all the staff that in December, mid-year review, we're going to do a 2% cut on the bottom portion of their budget, okay? Our hope was to come back to the Commission and take the cuts on the bottom portion of the budget and move it up to the top, to where then they can get some salary and benefits from that, or we could look at the healthcare issues that we're being faced with. So there's a lot of avenues that we're approaching, that we're looking at. If Mr. Ballas comes up here and talks about 911, and we can talk about hanging different cell phone towers, cell phone antennas on our repeaters, those kind of things, those are all avenues that staff is diligently working at. But this is, this is real data, and this is something that we have to deal with, and so we're wanting the Commission to be well aware of it and show what we're going to do. At this point, Taos County is not looking at layoffs. I mean, we, I want to make that point very clear, and that's not even something that we've discussed at this point.
Mr. Chairman- Commissioner Romero and Commissioner Blakenor.
And Steve, that, that is all what I want to see on paper. I, I want to be able to make a decision on this 911 thing. We've spent 11 months already working on it, bouncing back and forth. I want to see from staff evidence that we can bring the monies necessary, the partnerships necessary, so that we can do this thing on our own. That's the way I see it.
Mr. Blakenor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think what I'm hearing is the first year we could survive, but in each successive year, it's going to get more and more difficult. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I'll direct you back, if we can go back to that one that's in front of you, Rick. If you look at the, the GRTs that have been coming in for Taos County throughout the year, which is this figure right here that's in front of you, basically, this year for the first time, we're, you know, above over the last five years. And so, I mean, that's a hard question to say. I mean, is the revenue looking better? Yes. Is the GRTs looking better, you know, but can I predict what's going to happen in Taos or on the federal level in the next year? You know, we have to look at this in that aspect, be frugal with our recommendations for budget for the Commission, and make sure that we hit those marks. But if you look at the orange mark that's out there for November, right now, we're on top. You know, it's, it's, it's above that. Will that continue? Those, that's yet to be seen.
Well, like, excuse me, the, well, you know, the line of questioning that, that I, I pursued with Leandro, they were just straight questions, and it's not, with all due respect to my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Romero, it's not a tactic, but it is scary. And, so, you know, we all have to take a look at that because all of us are trying to accomplish certain things within our districts and for the county as a whole. And, you know, it's just common sense. It just is. If you're losing 12% of your, and we might not lose PIL, I, I agree with Commissioner Duran, that's not a sure thing, but it's something that we have to face as a possibility. If you're losing 12% of your budget there, you're increasing your E-911 by another 700 grand a year, it, you know, it doesn't take a genius. Commissioner Romero wants something on paper to show that it can be done. Well, it can't be done. You don't have, we don't have an extra $2 million a year to spend. You know that. We, we scrape and do everything we can to get a bregadero and to get cayahon, you know, these are a couple of hundred thousand dollars a pop. We do everything we can to get that. Steve has, has lined out ideas, you know, to try and pinch and scrape here and there, but that stuff doesn't make up $2 million a year. You don't have to be a mathematician to figure that out.
And Mr. Chairman, are we going to have to spend $2 million a year?
No, the $2 million is the-
You know, Mr. Chairman, hold on a second, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I have been on this commission 10 years prior to this already, and I have seen budgets from previous Commissioners where they left it when there was only $34 left in the checking account, and the, the state was ready to take it on. This is nothing, you know? That's why we're elected by our constituents to make these difficult decisions, and that's why we're here. What we need to do is find a way to do it and, and move on, instead of be playing back and forth with the town of Taos.
And Commissioner Duran?
Let me ask this question. When we made the budget in June, no, we were at 4/12ths, no. You people lowered it down to 3/12ths because the other 1/12th, you put it in reserves. I think this is what you had told me, for in case we get, we had to do matching, matching funds. Where's that amount of money at?
That was the form that the manager showed you a while ago with the 1.5 million. It was actually 1/12th equals about 800,000. That's about one month of operating for the county. We had 1.5 beyond that, so the 3/12th requirement is 2.-
Because we were at 4/12ths, no?
We were above that. We had almost 6/12ths at the end of the year, and that was, a lot of that was because we had just received the PIL, and so the cash balance reflected almost a 6/12th reserve because the PIL had come in. Without that PIL, we would have been just above the 3/12ths, which is 2.6 million in reserves. We currently, as of October 30th, which is our low point, we had the 4/12ths. We had 3.67 million in the bank, which is, constitutes the 4/12th plus 121,000 on top of the 4/12th. That's what we had at our low point this year. My concern and my worry is next year, at this point-
But let me, let me pose this question. This, I mean, with this commission or any other commission, I think on property tax, we're like at 7/12ths, and we don't have to go out for a vote. We can go up to 8, 11/12ths, I think. And that, you know, but that's something we've got to think about, but it would generate if the PIL money went away.
And that's a good point. The question was asked, how are we considering bringing in more revenue? We were about to hire a financial advisor, we're looking at every single one of our GRT increments and how we can maybe phase one out to swap it out for other things. We're looking at the possibility of a geo-bond. Taos County's never had a geo-bond, one of the few counties at this point that doesn't have a reoccurring schedule for their roads, bridges, and heavy equipment. We've never done that, we've never asked the voters at this point to take on that burden, but that is an option, that is something that we can explore as staff and bring back to you.
Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner, before you go on, I think, I think you guys are both right, because we can do this with collaboration, with partners. We can do this, but we have to have partners. I mean, it's, it's a win-win for everybody with partners. You know, the Forest Service is willing to go in, Cuesta's willing to go in, you know, but we have to have partners to move this forward. But we got to, you know, and, and we can do it if we have partners. Without partners, it's pretty tough. With partners, we can do it.
That is it?
And Commissioner Romero-
And Mr. Chairman, well, let's, let's secure those partners, let's, let's do this. Mr. Ballas, I know probably has a lot of ideas as to how to come up with those monies that we need. I, I'm still not clear, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the total budget on a yearly basis, what exactly it's going to cost to operate 911 on our own versus at Kit Carson Electric Co-op or at Kit Carson. I'm not clear yet as to how much money needs to moved up, be moved upfront in order to get this program started, and how much it will cost on a, on a yearly basis after that.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, let me take a stab at that, and then staff can, can assist if possible. If we want to establish the infrastructure without CAD, would be about 900,000 to do that, and, and that's a one-time expense-
Is it on paper somewhere? Do you have a, a budget set up for it?
We can, we can get you a budget on that. We have presented that to the Commission in the past and can, can bring that back up.
But it's changed.
But, well, it's changed because we've added different demonstrations, we added different software, but it's really, it's like going shopping. You know, if you want the basics and you want to be able to dispatch, 900,000 approximately. That includes your telephony, that includes your antenna, that includes your, your generator, includes your equipment. Well, maybe, so, so that's, that's that aspect. Now, if we want to include CAD and we want to include some of the other bells and whistles that we're definitely recommending in that aspect, it, it runs up 2.5 million, all the way up to, you know, you can, you can get the Rolls Royce of it, which we're not obviously going to get because we're going to be good source of the, of the public's money, but it just depends on how much you want to bring forward and how much you want to put in front of that. And on December 10th, we're going to give a demonstration on that, but at minimum about $300,000 originally, you know, up to 900,000 or another, another million dollars if you want to get all the bells and whistles. And that's, and that's really getting specific and really generating that software, generating everything to our specific area in, in that aspect.
And what does, how does that compare to what is currently being used?
Well, I'll defer to Alan on that one, or, or Mr. Ballas. They, they, they know the, the ins and outs of the radios. I can tell you that it is the latest state-of-the-art equipment that's out there compared to what we have right now at Kit Carson, which is, my understanding, not even something that anybody's willing to, to maintain because it's so old. It's just like any other computer system or, or technical system that you buy. I mean, a lot of them, over a year's time, basically become the old stuff, and you get your new iPhone 5, it's the same thing, but, you know, an iPhone 3 and iPhone 4 is way better than the actual digital radio where you pick up and, you know, it's on your, it's, it's two feet long and-
So clearly, Steve, it, it leaves room for faulty equipment, and faulty equipment means missed 911 calls.
Yes, sir. And, and I think that, I don't think that, you know-
It also means deaths, possible deaths-
Yes, sir.
In the community and liability.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I-
Blakenor?
Thank you for, thank you for that, and, you know, I, I fully agree with what you said, we need partners, but let's not forget the town. The town was here tonight saying, we know we need new equipment. We know we need new equipment. We are willing to contribute. They've got a $14 million budget. We can't, no, we can't just eliminate the town as a potential partner, they've been our partner in this for 20 years.
Let's, let's write a, a letter to the town requesting that they pay half of the equipment.
Well, that would, that's a, that's a fine idea, but the alternative, the alternative to the letter would be for us to take a stand here and write in black and white what we want in the JPA. That was the motion before us this evening. That's better than a letter. They come in to us with a JPA, we come back to them with a JPA in black and white. And, and Councilman Peralta said he would consider it, that's all he asked from us.
Chairman, and, and we still don't know whether JPAs can be fully honored. Look at what happened, look, if you look at the history of what has happened, under the current JPA, the town of Taos was supposed to take care of the repeater stations, and look what happened. Taos County ended up having to dish out its own money to repair those repeater stations. Because of that, we potentially probably even lost a life in Cuesta. We can't depend on that JPA.
Commissioner Duran?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Last time that staff came to us, and it was with that CAT deal, I think we were at, what, 1.6? Were we in that ballpark then?
That's correct, Commissioner. Anywhere between 1.2, 1.6 million. I, I misspoke earlier when I was saying the Motorola contract is $900,000 itself. When you take in the, the actual antenna and the generator and those kind of things, it comes up to about 1.2. But from that 1.2, if we talk CAD, anywhere from 400, 300, 400,000 up to 900,000, just depends on how wide we want to go in that aspect. So it could be anywhere between 1.6, 1.7 million.
So if we were at, say, 1.6, no, and then we would more or less have the state-of-the-art equipment, right?
That's correct.
Chairman Commissioners, the equipment we were looking at, and, and the county manager's correct in saying that it, the base core package starts about that 400,000 mark, but with that base package, it meets a lot of the requirements as far as being able to put GIS mapping in there, getting the rural addressing, getting cross-street information, closest unit response. The portion beyond that goes more into the record management, and that's information that can be shared not only through the 911 entities as far as police fire and EMS, but it's also information that can be shared through the courts, that can be shared with other law enforcement agencies. It's, it's all information sharing from there. To what extent we build those layers and how much we, of that information we want to share with other entities, that's what's going to drive the cost up, but that's part of the stuff. If we can bring these partners in and they contribute to it, then it brings that- If we can bring these partners in and they contribute to it, then it brings that cost back down. Part of the, the thing right now with the system that, that they have, it's kind of goes back to the way the repeaters were handled. When it broke, they called in emergency repair. There's not a preventive maintenance agreement, to my understanding, that was budgeted for the town to take care of the 911 councils as they currently, excuse me, currently are. So that's another factor of, it's an unknown cost of what was currently having to be spent. If we kind of look that, look at that back with the repeaters, we know that based on what money we put in, we're finding out that the, the neglect is going to cost a lot more money. So if we stay with the older equipment till sometime comes that if there is a JPA, we take it on by ourselves, that the money becomes available, then that's going to be yet another unknown cost of how much maintenance do we have to put in to bring that equipment up to what it was required to do? But it's still lacking the, the GIS, rural addressing, closest unit response, cross-street information. The records management system that they use is sleuth. That's strictly designed for law enforcement and for the detention center. But that's another thing that, that's not information shared on the fire and EMS side for reporting. So we're trying to streamline and consolidate stuff and get the most bang for the buck if we were to pursue the other path. But like I say, depending on where we want to take that is going to depend on what the final cost will be and who we can bring in as partners, whether it's under a JPA or whether we bring them in as a contract.
And Mr. Chairman, Alan, how much of this can be leased, as far as the equipment is concerned?
Well, there was a lease agreement for the Motorola that's come some question with Mr. Malone, and I don't have everything on that. So the Motorola equipment, looks like that might have to be a one-time cash purchase. As far as with the, the CAD, we haven't actually gotten that close with any vendor to find out exactly what agreements are out there because we're still demureing different vendors and getting information from different vendors.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, Chairman Commissioners, Alan, how much monies is allocated for the maintenance of the repeaters annually? Or is it?
Well, annually, what we did with this first one, and it came actually out of the, I believe it was the 399 fund, is that correct? The Commissioners' Fund, and we allocated $40,000. Out of that 40,000, year-to-date, we've spent approximately 23,000. But then we re-secured the Homeland Security grant for 75,000 that was specifically requested for the, the additional repairs to the repeaters, which is going to be approximately another $43,000.
County of Taos responsible for the maintenance?
Under the current JPA, that was the arrangement, that they would take care of all the, the equipment, which included the repeater sites.
And the reason I ask this, we went up there to Flag Mountain, Peter. You had solar panels on the ground, which they've been corrected since. So obviously, nobody's been up there, had, had been up there for a while.
The only time up until when we took over the repeaters, the only time they would get any care was when the repeater site actually went down. So it was an emergency call.
And then you've got some gates that are locked up there.
Well, some of the gates that are locked are, some of the agreements that were based on property ownership and all that, but we do have those MOUs to actually get to those, those sites. The biggest hit that we've taken in the past with getting the repeater sites fixed is usually when a repeater site's gone down this time of the year. It, it's not even really the cost to the equipment, it's the cost to get equipment, to get personnel, and the parts up there to fix the repeater. So we could have a bill of $12,000, and 8,000 of that 12 goes to snowmobiles or a snowcat, and the rest goes to the actual labor and, and parts to fix the repeater.
And that might be a problem, that's one of the problems, that we can't get up there. So maybe we ought to invest on a, on a track.
Well, the, the thing with that is we're working with other partners who would be willing to provide that equipment, also under the preventive maintenance agreement that we have with Advanced Communications, is they have that equipment where that's part of the, the agreement, is if they need that equipment, they have the equipment. So that's not a cost that we need to incur. But I've already talked with members of Forest Service and some other entities, where they said during the winter months, if you guys need snowmobiles, give us a call, we'll provide the snowmobiles. Same thing if we had to move equipment up to a repeater site like a shed. I've already talked to Homeland Security for the state. If they can work out something with Air National Guard, they'll fly the shed up there so we don't have to actually truck it up. So there are different things that we're looking at to save pennies in the future with some of these events. But with the preventive maintenance agreement and we get personnel on the mountains before the winter months come, it significantly reduces the ability or the probability of having a repeater site go down during the winter.
And Mr. Sanchez, I'll have to echo what Vice Chairman said. We lost a resident in Cuesta, you know?
I understand that, sir.
That's really sad. What can be done? When we went up there, there is, there's a one, one area that's really bad. We had the, the chief of police and one of the workers, village workers, they slid off the side of the mountain. What are you going to do to correct that one area there, that big curve that's there? That's, can you put up any fencing or something? But it may happen again.
We would have to talk to the property owner and see if that's something that would be allowable and, and just discuss it with them, that in the interest of, of safety of the individuals going up there, that this is just a deterrent factor, it's not a guaranteed cure-all. But that's something that we could definitely discuss with them. With that incident that was brought up, the county manager also asked if we could donate a radio to be placed on the ATV that was used to go up there. That way, they would always have radio communication, and that's something that we can do. I actually have an, an older radio that we could donate to the village of Cuesta to do that. So there's always things that we can look at and, and working with our partners to get those goals accomplished.
Mr. Sanchez, if that could be a priority, is to start looking at the bad areas where these folks might slide off the side of the mountain, which we already had that, and nothing's been done. You know, it could happen again.
And like I say, we can talk specifically with the technicians that go up there all the time. They know where all these areas are. I mean, they, they go and service our repeaters, they service other entities' repeaters as well. So we can look at those areas of concern and, and find out a way how we can work with the property owner to kind of mitigate some of those.
Because if this, something else happens, somebody gets hurt, that's, they knowing that this was a bad area, coming back at us and...
Yes, sir. And that was one of the reasons why we talked with the county manager to bolster some of those communications, where they would have communications in case, heaven forbid they slid off the mountain, but even if they go up in deep snow or they get caught in inclement weather, at least they have some communications through that repeater site or through another repeater site to let dispatch make them aware that, you know what, we have some issues up here and we need some help.
And I've been talking to the chief of police in Cuesta and Jim Vaughn, who's involved with that, and they, they got some issues there that they need help on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We're talking about this PILT money for next year. Okay. I asked the question, we put the CAT at, what, 1.6 million. Do we have that money available in this year's budget? If we wanted to do that?
The 1.6, the 1.6 million to get it going at the, we have, we don't have the entire 1.6.
Okay, but let me ask this question now. We, we, we would need, we would need it or we don't? We can maybe get by, maybe with 800,000, 900,000 and do the rest in payments? Could we do that? Anybody checked into that?
At the time, the lease is off the table for the simple fact that the fire excise tax is not allowable to use for E911 purposes. That's been clarified, well, that's been a concern of Mr. Malone, and we're going forward with that, knowing that it's, it's not an allowable use right now to pledge that as a lease without taking it back to the voters and having the language changed and allowing that.
Okay, but, okay, let me ask then, and then we will not have the 1.6 available?
No, we probably could do the Motorola equipment upfront purchase and deplete the, the reserves for the, the complex fund and the excess GRT fund. We'd deplete those most of the way down if we did that. But we could probably purchase the Motorola equipment upfront.
Commissioner Blankenhorn, and then Commissioner Romero.
Thank you. It's my understanding that if we entered into a long-term lease, we'd need a dedicated source of revenue, and staff had originally identified the fire excise as the source of revenue for that. Is that right?
Originally, yes.
Okay.
That was incorrect. That was my mistake.
Oh, yeah. We all make mistakes. So that's off the table. And, and we would have to, as you say, deplete reserves in order to follow through with that. And then additionally, if we did this without the town, our operating budget would be more and more as we go forward. It just would, you know, because we wouldn't have the same 300 grand a year that we get from the town now. So the numbers are what they are. But, you know, we're, we're all getting tired. It's like this is a long thing that we just go back and forth with. Commissioner Romero and I are getting testy with one another, and I don't really want to continue down that path, you know? But what I'm wondering is, you know, are, are we going to make a decision here? I mean, are, are we going to decide as a board just to say, no, we're not even going to consider a JPA with the town? And just push forward because we don't trust them? Is, is that the wishes of this board?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Mr. Bellis, if, you gave me a letter a while ago, if maybe you could speak to the, the contents of it with regards to the state awards, the county on the $75,000 for E911 Public Safety Grant lost by the town.
Well, that, that's a press statement to go out, which identified that we were awarded the $75,000 in Homeland Security money again this year. There's no question that we had it two years ago, and as part of a total of about $200,000. And we granted that 75,000 back through Homeland Security to the town for the repairs of the repeaters that Mr. Sanchez was referring to. And they did not spend any of that money. So as a result, they lost that grant. And when we took over the repeaters, we thought we could get the 75,000 back. We couldn't. So using that 75 this year to make up for that work, that's $150,000 that we would have normally put into law enforcement for the town, for Cuesta, Red River, Ski Valley, for radios, for the sheriff's office, for new weapons, whatever. And I think that's about the, just the letter. There is, there's one thing that I do believe everybody here, no matter what opinion you have about how we should go, should agree on. And that is that this is a very expensive system, and nobody should have to do it on their own. And it may be that nobody can do it on their own. But until someone steps forward and we stop the feuding, we have this, we, we missed going other than that 75. We could have gone to Homeland Security for money to pay for the antenna over here. But we hadn't made the decision that we were going to proceed and that we were doing it or the town was doing it or whoever. We're, we're now got this demonstration on the 10th, and we're going to have our congressional officials there, hopefully represented the senator's office. Senator Udall's office says they're very excited about the idea of us doing this regional concept, working with federal agencies. It's, it's a show. When you ask, what are we doing for money? We, we didn't anticipate coming to the county commission and saying, we want $2 million from you guys. We have to sell it to you, but we're also selling it to other partners. And the software company has suggested going that way because they want to get into the New Mexico market, and they're willing to even pay us a franchising fee for everybody else that gets in the system so that we can include Cuesta and, and Red River and everybody for free, and the town. That's the goal. Everybody agrees they want to go with this software because, but as the town's police chief said, but I don't see how we can afford it on our own. So we all have to work together. But if we don't come together on the 10th and one, as one entity stand up and say, this is the way we're going, nobody's going to come to that meeting because they don't want to get in a pissing match. And we've also heard from Bobby Gonzalez, we've heard from other legislators, we're not going to get in this thing we did last year where we're got to decide between whether we're funding something for the town, something for the county, or somebody's community center. We want to see, and, and Commissioner, you've heard that because that's been the focus of the IGC, is he came to that meeting and said that. I want to see projects that serve our entire district and people are working together, whether it's the airport, whether it's a water plant, something. And this is a great project to do that.
In other counties, Mr. Bellis, it's, does the county have, is, is the county usually the, the lead agency, the one that's responsible for providing 911? Or is it a combination of, are there partnerships? I'm sure there's partnerships, but I'm sure that the county, the counties, the 33 counties or 32 other counties that are out there, they've taken the lead to get this thing done, to, to provide safety to their constituents. Am I correct in saying that?
Commissioner, there's, every county varies, but in the majority of cases, and I think that from the meetings we've had with the town, some of their councilmen have even stated it publicly in meetings, there's only one entity that can raise revenue across the board to benefit all the municipalities, and that's the county. And the town's not in a position to do that or any of our other partners.
So, so clearly, it is our responsibility. It's, it's great if we can bring in the partners. It, it helps, you know? And, and you've created a list of, of various partners. Let's, let's go to them. Let's ask them, how much are you willing to contribute to this effort? We're going to do it.
And Commissioner, if I could, the one last part about that timeframe is, if we don't get this resolved and by the first two weeks of December, we miss a legislative year, a whole year. We also miss a congressional year because while they start in October 1st, those grants are delayed through the budget process to right now, we have a good chance that we could go get federal money. So we could pay capital costs, ideally. We could also, by bringing in the partners, cut our operating costs. And right now, the problem is it looks so bad as an operating expense because we're trying to finance everything and push it forward and tack it on to that original 288 or 371. And so the ideal is we pay as we go. And it doesn't mean we have to buy the whole thing all at once. But we have been told that if we go ahead on the Motorola contract, if we make a commitment on a software supplier, that they will make sure that we have a basic CAD system in place that is way better than what we have now. It isn't the perfect part, but understand, spending that whole 400, 600,000 on software doesn't do you any good if we haven't got all the vehicles with GPS screens and we don't have all the firemen lined up with GPS-ing devices, and we're not ready to go to that. So that's our goal, is we make that investment now. And then every year, we go about to Homeland Security and FEMA and in our annual allocations that we get, we got another $300,000 to put into equipment to upgrade every one of these communities. And we don't have to ask them to go to the taxpayers, or we don't. But if you don't do that, if we don't get it together before this legislative session, then you're going to wait a year to have another shot. There will be less money, there will be less opportunity to do that, and I promise you, you'll wind up having to pass a GRT to pay for EMS 911 because nobody's going to have the money to afford it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just reiterate the question to Rick, when he says get it together, and when Commissioner Romero says, let's seek out those other partners, are we talking about the town?
It, it includes everybody that, that 911 affects, Mr. Chairman.
And that means the town, too?
Everybody, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I do have a question before.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that the county should, you know, we're already started. Now, staff's been working on this for, what, three, four months, no?
More.
Yeah, or more than that. And if we don't, if we, the county don't take the bull by the horns, you know, we're going to lose out on all county staff. And I figure if the county takes the bull by the horns, dominoes will fall in place. You know what I mean? But we got to do it. We cannot be over here, because I don't trust the town. It's like I stated a while ago, wishy-washy. You know what I mean? You cannot have people up there making decisions when they resent something and then they bring it back. I mean, what kind of trust can you have in people like that? I don't know. You can't.
And Mr. Bellis.
Chairman.
You talked about, about funding cycles and stuff. Is this on the ICIP? Will we get money if it's not on the ICIP?
Ideally, it should be on the ICIP, and actually, I believe it, it is. I was looking for Anita. But yeah, I, I think when we came in with the first draft, I asked her to put it on there. It's not in your top three. I think it's like seven or eight, but I will double-check on that. But I'm pretty sure we put it on there.
Okay.
Because we added that in the courthouse.
And then the other thing that, in, just kind of lurking in the back of my mind is, there's monies that if there was to be now, then a split, hopefully, whatever direction this goes in, if there's two dispatch, there's that... goes in, if there's two dispatch, there's that money that the state allocates for the telephone calls, and that amounts to about, what, another?
They pay about $70,000 a year in operating expenses.
So, that will be an additional to the budgets, or is that already been included in there?
The budgets we provided you, that Conrad did handle the operating side, included both a scenario where we went with Unified PSAP, and that cost was paid for. If it's paid for, our telephone bill is about 1,200 bucks, as I recall. And if it's not paid for, it's about $70,000.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Blinkenorn?
Yeah, I'm just going to try one more time, I guess. Well, I'll probably try more than one more time, to be honest. So, when Rick says that we got to get it together for the legislative session, and Commissioner Romero says, "I want to seek out partners," we're still talking about the town as one of them, right?
Correct.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay. So, why are we ignoring this JPA because that's the only way we get the partner? I'm not asking that. That's kind of a redundant question.
I know that's rhetorical, but I'm going to take the opening, and that is it. When I insinuated that we had a deadline on the MOU in which the county could step up and be the fiscal agent, the PSAP, own the equipment, and move forward, I was not saying that that is mutually exclusive. It puts the county in the driver's seat for the month of December so that we can go forward. There's no discussion whose plan it is, because you've heard it here tonight, and we've heard it over and over. The town doesn't want to run it. We all want a public safety board because we want everybody to throw money into the pool. It's just, how do we get there? So, we're not arguing about the big issues. All we're arguing about is, do we miss this funding cycle, go in another three, four months arguing over how that agreement goes out during the campaign season? And I'm sure, miraculously, after March, it's going to get resolved, one way or the other. Okay?
But, so what are you advising us to do about the JPA?
In move ahead and notify 15 days within the deadline before or after, depending on how you interpret it, it's kind of vague, of the MOU that you're exercising your option as the county to become the PSAP fiscal agent. In the meantime, don't give up on the negotiations. Keep negotiating a JPA, because to me, that takes the politics out of it, and we can go then ask for the money, and we can work on the details. Because if all the things that the county has said they want to offer the town, and the town has said they want to accept, but we get caught up in, well, okay, then you can, you're the agent. You can write it down and say, "Hey, we're running the whole thing, and guess what? Here, we're giving you a seat on the board. We're giving you, here's the amount you wanted to pay, we're going to let you pay that," and all of that. And it solves it.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Bellis. We should continue to negotiate on the JPA. I wonder if Leandro could...
JP, we're going to be the fiscal agent.
No, no, that could be part of it. Leandro, could you share with us what you learned from Mr. Rios?
I don't know. To me, this is just, we're going through it and through it, you know? And it's like I said, the county's got to take the bull by the horns, and if we don't, I mean, I'm just wasting my time here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that kind of does address Commissioner Romero's point about the responsibility of the county. The county does have the option to enact the Emergency Communication GRT. That does tell me that they are expecting the counties to basically take charge. They have the ability to fund it. In talking to Mr. Rios today, and I'll preface this, Mr. Malone and I had the opportunity to talk to DFA today. They came to Taos, they came up to our office. Mr. Rios and Jolene Slowen sat down with us. They talked to us about our situation. They were about to, after that, I think, go and do a tour of the Gustor facility. And I asked them a few questions about other operations. How do other counties and other PSAPs work? And how are they funded? And are they funded well? And I think Mr. Malone asked them, "Do they have the same problems we have with old equipment?" Basically, if they have enacted the tax, they don't have problems funding their issue. They have problems when they're all trying to come together in a JPA, and everyone's paying into it. They do have the equipment problems that we have. They also did warn us about enacting all of the increments at once, too, because the other extreme on this side is, counties that enact all four of these potential increments now have too much money, and the JPA Board is the one making the decisions for the excess money that the county should be able to have. So, you know, I still agree that we, if the county's going to take it over, the county at some point needs to look at that tax as the funding mechanism. I don't agree that we enact all four of them. We take our time, we do one at a time. We also, I also asked DFA today, "What data do you have that you can share with us about these other PSAPs in the state?" I want to look at other budgets and other entities about our size and see if we're operating where they're at. They're compiling that, and they'll have that soon, and that's something they will share with us. They also did mention one very interesting fact, and this is a political thing, and it's here or there. This is on the radar of our governor. This dispute has gone all the way up to the fourth floor, from DFA to her, and she is watching very closely how it handles. And they made the comment that the two governing bodies need to come together, make a decision, or she's going to make the decision. The decision will come down from the fourth floor, and that is not something I would particularly want to accept for the county. I don't think you want me to take that position for you either, because, you know, they have a lot of...
Chairman, but that point you just stated, they're just trying to, or that I should use, scare us, or whatever. You know, the thing about it is, none of those commissioners have gone over there to DFA or with Rios, or with the governor. All this is coming from the other entity. You know what I mean?
And perhaps...
And the thing about it is, she don't scare me. You know what I mean?
But it may have been that way before, Commissioner, but I think at this point, they are open to us. They came to us today, to our county, to my office, to sit down and ask us our side of it. They want to know both sides at this point, and they still hope, and they believe that we will all come together for a consolidated PSAP. We brought up the regionalization ideas that Mr. Bellis had, including other partners. They love that idea. They feel that is the right approach to take, to include the Colfax, Ririba County, Moora County, anyone else.
Because, you know, look at it in reality, you know, where has the governor helped this county? Since she's been elected, she ain't never helped out this county. You know what I mean?
I don't disagree with you, but I'd hate to see money that should be going to Taos County, heading down to Luna County, or Tonyana County.
But you stated it a while ago, that why should we have a JPA and have the Board do whatever if there was excess money? I mean, when, if we're the fiscal agent and we're running it, you know, it should be up to whoever's sitting on that Board then to see how that money is dispersed.
Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Malone? If Taos County took the bull by the horns and went on its own and did this on its own, hoping to get those partners eventually, we don't necessarily have to put a joint powers agreement or any other sort of agreement in place. What we could, in fact, ask for, and I think this is what I'm hearing from the village of Taoski Valley and Cuesta, is that they're willing to pay their fair share as long as they are being provided that service. The only one that is, well, it seems like the town of Taos is wanting the JPA, but they've got a problem with the controlling end of it. That is kind of what I'm seeing, Mr. Chairman. If we just went out to these potential partners and asked them, "How much are you willing to contribute to this program on a year-to-year basis? What are you willing to commit to?" Instead of, in lieu of a joint powers agreement that's got these JPA partners, why not put together an advisory board of true professionals, our fire department people, our emergency personnel, our police chiefs, the people who are working with 911 on a day-to-day basis instead of the politicians? Why couldn't we do that? And that advisory group, that advisory board, come to the County Commission and make recommendations on what's the next item that needs to be purchased to be able to take us on to a new CAD system? And like Leandro said, you don't want to impose all of those four taxes, because then all of a sudden, we have too much money. And you don't want that JPA to have access and control of all that money. Why not create an advisory board that would be able to provide the information that is necessary to the Commission to make those determinations, or those, to take a stance on what decisions need to be done in order to get 911 in its place?
Bellis?
What keeps us from doing that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, everybody, including Art Rios and DFA, quote San Juan County as the model, because it has a PSAP Board that is run by the public safety entities. However, even under that circumstance, as Mr. Malone very diligently pointed out, which was something I wasn't aware of, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that someone still has to be the fiscal agent, and in that case, it's the county of San Juan, because they built the dispatch center.
Mr. Chairman, we heard from the city manager, Mr. Rodriguez, tonight, that he's willing to hand that over to the county. If I, unless I misunderstood, maybe, Abigail, you can shed more light on that, on those thoughts.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, can you repeat your question, please?
So, I asked Mr. Rodriguez, Oscar Rodriguez, the city manager, whether they were willing to, basically, you know, what is it that they want to see out of the 911? And what the interest of the town is? And I asked him if he was wanting to just basically hand over the fiscal management of 911, and he said the town council didn't have a problem with that.
And that's correct, and our primary interest is public safety. And yes, they have expressed the desire to go ahead and turn over the fiscal agent status to Taos County.
And any idea how much the town would be willing to contribute on a yearly basis?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, I believe it's in the JPAs. I think they've given different options. One was 53, and I don't remember off the top of my head of the other, but I think that's what we'd be willing to contribute. It's in the JPA. I don't want to misquote.
Is there a dollar amount that you remember that they would be willing to contribute on a yearly basis?
I think that would be determined by the JPA Board, as it is today. We're committed to providing or to contributing 371-896.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Malone?
Commissioner Romero, you started out, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to respond as well.
Yeah, if you can, please, Mr. Chairman.
I kind of got lost in the shuffle there, but the structure of how 911 is operated, the legal structure, doesn't have to be a JPA. It could be something along the lines of what you were describing. It could be a situation where the county simply does 911 and contracts with the other partners to pay a given amount. As long as there's only the one PSAP, then that works. Now, if one of the potential partners decides not to go along and maintain their own PSAP, then we run into the problem of DFA funding. It's important to draw the following distinction, and I'm not sure if Ms. Adame was drawing that distinction or not, but there would be a difference between the county just being the fiscal agent, and there still being a JPA, and the county actually running the show, and then it wouldn't be the fiscal agent, it would be doing it for its own account. And so, yes, legally, that could be structured that way. There's nothing that says you have to have a joint powers agreement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think I got a second win here. So, how does the staff, how does the staff feel about that? Is it feasible? Is it something that we can do?
I'll do from the public safety side, and you can do from the money side. Chairman Commissioners, this is something we've actually kind of discussed, and it wouldn't be, I guess, that big of a deal, knowing that whatever we, I guess, whoever's on that technical advisory board could come up with a list of priorities and then bring it in front of the Commission for approval, and explain how we came to that conclusion, and why the reason is. I think the big selling point to that, I guess, plan is having the people from public safety there, and then being able to agree that, okay, we have X amount of funds, but this is the major breakdown in the system currently, so it may affect where that fix benefits the town more than everybody else. It may be where it affects and benefits Ski Valley more than anybody else. But come to that distinction as to why, give the reasons, and then bring that in front of the Commission for approval, and have valid documentation as to why we feel that way, and do what I think the 911 Board has done now, or the 911 Committee has done now, and do all the research, come with all the documentation, and what those costs are, and the different options of how to, to get that accomplished.
Okay. Anybody on the other end of it?
I'm sorry, I would ask you to reiterate the part of the question for the budget.
Well, it would be good to know exactly how much each partner can contribute.
Okay.
How much money are we going to have available? If, I think the key, one of the key partners, obviously, is the town, based on the size of their population. They said that they're willing to give up the fiscal agency, they're willing to turn it over to the county. We take the bull by the horns. We look at exactly what it's going to cost to get the very basic service that will definitely put us above what we currently have now, to assure public safety.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Commissioner Romero, we can definitely put those numbers together, but the elephant in the room, and the big question is, that number based on the Planning Department, that number based on Kit Carson, because we're talking two different animals there.
Mr. Chairman, based on Planning Department?
And I'd just like to talk, you mentioned that, you know, the discussion that's been occurring has really been what's identified the true needs of this E-911. So, you, the discussion that the Commissioners are bringing out, the back and forth, has done more to identify the true needs, the true budgetary requirements, not just for the short term, but for the long term. And I think now, going forward, no matter what, we have a much better picture, a much clearer idea of what needs to be there, and what needs to be identified, and what needs to be separated out as operating capital, and, you know...
Well, Leandro, I look at it this way. It's our obligation, whether it comes from the town or the county. However it has happened, obviously, it has not worked well. We need to take that obligation as the governing body of Taos County as a whole, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, may I point out something on the JPA? Well, it states here that the town is willing to put in 45%. So, you know, if we get 5% from Ski Valley and 5% from Cuesta, all we need is, the county's only got to dish out 50%. So, that's the big deal.
But Commissioner, there is a cap on that, so, just so everybody knows, I think the cap is 371 per entity, so I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that. Mr. Bellis and Mr. Archuleta, whoever.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Bellis. I just, we're talking a little bit of apples and oranges. The 45% would be the operating cost, and so that, we have to keep that in mind, that that's what we're talking about. When we're talking about a capital expense, which is purchasing the equipment, putting up the antenna, those kind of things, then that's a capital expense, that's something different, and that's something that we can get to the Commission, tell you what that cost is, and then we could break it out with a 45, 5 in that aspect, and we can break it out, as Commissioner Doudon has outlined. But what's in actually proposals of the JPA and those kind of things, that's actually for the operating expense from the day-to-day, year-to-year operation.
Mr. Bellis, did you have anything to add?
I wanted to say, so that there's no confusion, I don't think there's a deference disagreement between the town and the county, or any of the partners, on the total budget cost at the 371. The question would be, if we financed everything and put that on top of the 371... The question would be, if we financed everything and put that on top of the 371, how would that work? So, the ideal is to go out and get that money and not have to do that. Now, at the 371, we're in agreement with the amount that the town wants, they're offering to pay, and we're offering to pay. So, if we both, I'm sorry, not the 371, it's the 741, 742. So, if we both paid, we wanted to let the other two communities off the hook, and we're both already agreeing, we'll pay the 371, which we have throughout, we have the budget, that's not a problem. The question only becomes, how and over what period of time do we finance the equipment? And we've sort of presented some ideas on that. There is money in the excise tax, you've already committed the 400,000 that was the residual in the construction fund, and there is money left. And I know that our finance director would jump up and say, you don't want to exhaust that whole fund that we have in the excess tax that we collect on here, that we're paying the Perovitch property in, because what if it falls short? And because the equalization payment is so funky. But you could take part of that to purchase the equipment and still leave, and I think Leandro had planned to go the same way I had, which is to show what is left on January 2014 to pay on that property, and you leave that amount in there, that if you had to pay the whole thing off in cash and free up that GRT to be used in the future, could you do that? And so, leave that amount in there, and then make the rest of that, I don't want to say surplus, reserve, available.
And so, Mr. Chairman, Leandro, that excess GRT that has been coming in, what are those numbers?
Well, currently, it's up there. This is the 103 fund. If you look all the way to the far right, next meeting, I'm going to come to you with the DFA resolution to adjust the equalization, because that did come in a little bit under what we had budgeted. So, we're going to have to lower our revenue just a little bit. But then we added in the 400,000 for the maintenance building structures, it was approved a few, about a month ago. The typical payment on the Perovitch property is 129,513 a year, broken up into two payments.
What is the balance?
The balance right now is 906,441. After January 31st, it'll drop down to 862,79. So, if we did pay it off, I mean, if we paid it off right now, there'd be a remainder in that account of 264, 264,000.
Which could go towards...
Which could go towards, and it also frees up the 129,500 a year that we're currently paying out to the payment on the property. The reason I even put all this together kind of goes back to the Pilt and cash flowing operations as needed. This is some way for us, if that worst-case scenario came about, this may be something we would entertain, to have that money coming in on a monthly basis, instead of having this reserve sit there. But, you know, those are options that we have, and that's something that you could look at.
And so, as not to deplete it, Mr. Chairman, how much would you recommend leaving there in that particular account?
I would say at least 700,000. You know, you want to leave the bulk of what you owe in there, just in case, worst-case scenario. That would be my recommendation to you. I think that's conservative, and I think you'll be safe that way. That 700,000 is basically what the balance would be after January 30th, 2016.
And the trend in GRTs, what has that been showing, say, for example, the last six months? Is it growing? Is it going down?
It's up compared to the previous year. It's not a large, you know, huge amount, but it is, it's up percentage-wise, I don't know, I can't tell you exactly, and I'll quickly or soon be able to do the next month of GRT and give you that graph again, so you can see how things are going. It is up, it's good, it's a good thing. I'm not, I feel it's a positive thing, but we just can't, I am always going to be hesitant, and I'm always going to sit on the conservative side of things. And so, until it's proven itself over two or three years, I'm not going to say that it's something we can take and budget.
Mr. Chairman, how long of a term do we have on the Perovitch property?
It's scheduled to be paid off July 30th, 2021.
2021.
So, I believe it was a 10-year term from the beginning of it. We've made three payments at this point, our fourth payment will be January 31st.
And by paying it off at this point completely, how much interest would be saved?
I'm not completely sure on that. I believe that we just pay the principal amount, and we would save, I would have to factor that, I'll do the math for you and get back to you on that. It would be significant to pay it off now, versus paying it off with two years left, obviously, yes, you save a lot more doing it now.
So, Mr. Chairman, this was just for budget, for discussion only. Any other thing, Mr. Cordova, that we need to hear about in budget on this particular E911?
I'll just, Chairman Commissioners, at this point, I'm just going to give you a little opinion. I agree that we need partners. I feel that the partners are going to be the key to make this thing the most successful, top-of-the-line, state-of-the-art E911 system. The December 10th presentation we have is going to be well-attended. I know DFA's, they're all excited, they're excited about the possibility of us being the first to merge beyond just our county with other partners, to go outside our county to partners like Colfax, Mora, and Ririba. They always throw Mora in there. Anyway, we can help Mora, they're going to always look on us as favorably, but that's the new model, that they would probably like to see going forward for other areas of the state. We're a huge state, not every county is, should even have its own PSAP. There's plenty of areas where they could consolidate two or three counties, so that's all, about all I have to say on that. I will always err on the side of conservative when it comes to our budget, and I just want you to know that I don't disagree with the fact that we can get this done, I just like the fact that we don't have a time constraint on it, and that we control the calendar and the clock to do this. I agree that this is a great team, and it'll get done. It'll get done well, and we'll have the best product at the end. I just, my opinion is, we could use a little more time.
Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, this isn't a legal question, but it occurred to me, it might be useful information for staff in running through some of these numbers that, obviously, everybody would like to hear. And Ms. Adame, I don't know if you're really prepared to answer this question, but is the, I think it came up when Mayor, former Mayor Peralta and manager Rodriguez were speaking, and that is, the willingness and ability of the town to participate in needed capital improvements?
We do need to upgrade some of our equipment, it's just a lot of things have been put on hold until this comes to resolution, too, so that we know which way we're going.
So, with that said, is there anything else from staff? Anything else from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, the meeting that's taking place on the 10th, it's on the 10th, correct? And it's going to be here? And I would, it would be great if the entire commission can attend it, Mr. Chairman. I have seen how these systems work, and how efficient they are, and how much, how effective they are with regards to public safety, and I will definitely plan to attend. But I, Mr. Chairman, I, like I said before, I'm willing to take the bull by the horns and be the lead agency in this, and move the county forward. We do have to forge those partnerships, and we just need to move forward for the sake of our residents, of our constituents, Mr. Chairman.
And I believe that we need to have partners, Commissioners. I think that's, on the 10th, I think that program that you guys are putting together will be beneficial for everybody in the community. There's a number of people that are invited. Hopefully, the commission and the council will be here, and everybody will get a firsthand look at what we're trying to achieve. And this is what we're trying to achieve, and hopefully, we can achieve this through partnerships. Commissioners, nothing else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the commission to hopefully agree to getting our county manager and our staff to set up a meeting shortly thereafter, the 10th, to be able to make a final decision on this.
And Mr. Bellis, what was that date that you were referring to? In December? Can we get a confirmation of that date? I think it was a MOU date, or...
Mr. Chairman, that was from the back-and-forth between Mr. Bellis and I. The MOU provides that if, within the 90 days to negotiate a new JPA, one is not achieved, and that would be December the 24th, that within 15 business days of that date, the county has the option of taking over the 911 operation.
But the date, Mr. Chairman, you're asking us, by when, so we could go after legislative funding, and...
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
About legislative funding, he was asking, is there a certain date that...
Well, there's two days that affect us. One is that Motorola offered us a $50,000 discount, and that expires on December 7th. And, you know, there's no hard and fast. I mean, the ideal would be December 10th, when we have our legislators here, to be able for the town and the county to put their arms around each other and say, we've got a plan, the county's going to run it. But, you know, January, I believe the 16th is the start of the legislative session, and I believe you're supposed to have your requests to committee at least two weeks before that.
Mr. Chairman, our manager and our staff need to figure out the days and the list. Let us know, give us a timeline.
So, Commissioners, with that said, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Any further, sorry, call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.